I'd like to open up the planning board meeting for July 19th. We are being video and audio recorded for the open meeting laws common with Massachusetts. First on the agenda, we have some old business. We have a discussion on the subdivisions and the bond for friendly estates. I see Lou is here. Hello? You want to just come up, please, and take a seat. Got to be great.
Evening. What do you mean? White room.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, no. It doesn't have shades.
We're getting there.
I did have a meeting with Lou for the board's information yesterday. And we discussed methods and procedures to try to get this thing moving along so that the neighborhood could be more complete. Lou formalized some of the things he wanted us to take a vote on, which I think is a reasonable memo that we got today. And if you have that in front of you, the first three items relate to the street trees. And I think that the three items, the spacing and the caliber and the species are pretty much all listed in our tree plan that was approved by the neighborhood and by the town, our planner at the time.
Right.
The only thing I'm not sure I know if they covered, Lou, was the species of the trees, so...
I have the plan here. Let me just...
Have the species file again?
Yeah, I was going to say I have the map of the plans along.
No, we don't have specified the types of trees that it's going to be on availability.
I would like to have that on the plan, just for the record. And what most folks have been doing because of two, well, three reasons: availability, pricing, and longevity as a street tree, were the species of a sugar maple, a red maple, and a Cleveland pear type.
Okay. I think one of the things we're concerned about is the eventual height.
Right, right, I understand.
You know, on something that's going to grow 45 feet tall on...
Right, and that's why, and that's why in your item number one, with the 45-foot difference, that really takes care of the canopies of these trees much better than it does when it was at 30 feet or less.
Right.
And I think at the time, years, months ago, it seems like years ago, we agreed on the caliber of being two and a half inches. And I think everything else in those first three items are all part of this plan that was approved by all three sides. Anybody in the board have any questions on those items?
That's fine.
No, well...
So we mentioned three species. Although it says two on any given street, ultimately, you're going to put three in? Is that the idea?
Yeah, as John was saying, you know, right now, there's a tremendous shortage of shade trees everywhere.
Yeah.
So, and depending on the book, you know, we need quite a bit of number of trees, so the availability of those trees is going to depend on, and if we can't get...
Got it.
Lou has made a commitment, during our conversation, to make sure these things are audited now, so by the time they're set to be planted in September, so he'll have them all shipped here and ready, because you can't go look for street trees two weeks before you're going to plant them.
Got you. That is good, thanks.
The other item that I had a conversation with Lou just this afternoon, that was what not I had thought was proper, was to change the thickness of the finish coat of the road from one, from two inches to one and a half inches. I think we'll agree that the two-inch pavement is what we should have. It's in every subdivision on our chart where it talks about one and a hitch, one and a half inch pavement. It's only for a five or six lot dead-end street, not for secondary roads. And I think Lou agreed to amend that fourth item to have a two-inch pavement on the finish coat of that roadway.
Good, right.
So if you could just make a note of that.
Yeah, well...
The other thing are in here, we wanted, some technical punch lists from the board, which I think is very reasonable. Before he puts down the finish coat, I think that we should know really what things that we are happy with, although there's a couple of minor discrepancies on the initial ASBIL. Where, as I've been saying to Lou for meeting until, I think that's okay. But he would have to get us a completed ASBIL, a completed ASBIL that should show the elevations along with the location of the roadway. And from that finished ASBIL, we could determine, our engineers will mark out if there are any discrepancies between the plan and the ASBIL. If there are, the planning board can look at it and make a decision. So, once you start to pave, you know you're on your way.
Right.
So if you can turn, if you can turn that ASBIL into us by, say, the first of August at the latest, we should have two, we should have two weeks for the engineers to review that. And you have a copy of our, our ASBIL list of all the things required on an ASBIL?
First thing we need to do is raise all the manhole covers and expose all the rings, bring them up to grade so that we can actually take a survey.
Great, and you're going to have the videotape of the, and that has to be witnessed by Bob McGee.
Right, flush the lines.
Right, so if we can get that all out of the way by the beginning of August, we should be all set to go.
Yes.
I also, there's a waiver requested here, which is what the town on EPW has been asking for, is to get rid of the Cape Cod berm, because it gets decimated with the first plowing, and change the Cape Cod berm to a monolithic berm, which is done for the town now, and the monolithic berm is less susceptible to the plows and lasts a lot longer in theory. So, I think that that's the item that the town had been looking for, that particular item number, number five. That being said, he's looking for a release of a bond from 142 to 105. We also talked about the open space fees of $26,000 that have been paid. I talked to the administration. The first comment was, they do not want to build another road with the town's resources, so they don't want to pull a bond, which I don't think there's going to be any need for that at this juncture. So, I think that I am, think we should put aside, I think we should put aside the $26,000 in question, question, right now, because by lowering this bond, I think the $105,000 left is, is more than enough to protect the town. Secondly, and most importantly, our last agreement, which I would like all of this in the minutes of our meeting, the last thing was, the next time that Lou comes back to us for a bond release, the road will be paved and the street trees will be in. So in theory, that happens this September, he comes back, and we'd be happy to release the funds appropriate to that by having the ASBIL done and having the payments. So this will be the, the final lot release until those two tasks are done, and he'll be back to ask for his money after that. So I think, as I said, I think that gives the town the protection we need with plenty of funding. The administration of the town will decide with town council what to do on the open space fee unless you decide in the meantime that it is proper and decide to pay it on your own, right? But other than that, the planning board doesn't really, we don't hire town council and proceed on those matters. So, with the bond, and Lou knows this also, with, with the bond in place, or being, the town also has the right to take this bond and go through a legal process and have the bond increased. But I think, fact being said, if we lower this to 105 and he finishes the paving and street trees, I, I think there's funding enough to protect the town, no matter which way this thing goes, so. That being said, did I cover everything pretty much, Lou?
Yes.
All right. Members of the board, questions on this? Michelle?
I have a couple of questions. You didn't mention the observation account for $1,000.
That's been paid.
It has been paid.
It has been paid.
Right.
And my other question goes back to the open space fund, so I understand that it's not our obligation to, our higher leaders counsel or seek advice, but is it our obligation to ensure that that has been collected, you know, as part of our procedural?
I'm not really sure. So we're going to turn it over to the administration. Hopefully Lou's attorneys tell them that it is valid and it is due. Right, worst-case scenario, the attorneys will decide, and they will decide the mechanism of which to try to collect it, whether they go through, as I said, and do a procedure to increase the bond to cover that, or whatever they do. But I think right now, on the sake of moving this, this along, so we get this neighborhood more in shape, we try to get this finalized while the weather's in the right time.
And is there agreement that we could get the ASBIL by August 1st?
Well, it's going, you know, we're today's line team. We're not going to be able to call it right and let through all of everybody.
Really, as long as you give us the ASBIL two weeks before...
Paving.
Right.
Right.
And I mentioned that date based on when you were thinking of paving. So, that gives the engineers hopefully two weeks to match up the ASBIL to the approved plan and see if there's any discrepancies. If there are, we would have to call the meeting and decide whether we thought the discrepancies were material enough that really affect the integrity of the roadways, or whether we just think it's our, an offshoot on the main set of plans, which is very common when you build roadways, especially planty ones, and leave it at that.
It's going to take a few weeks for us to get the startup going.
Right, I understand, I understand. We'll just base that ASBIL on...
Keep the board posted on this, but...
Right, so you can figure when you give us that ASBIL two weeks after, we would give you the okay, whether it's our right to pave.
Right. That's the goal.
That's my other question.
Walter, questions? No, I'm good.
Provided that all this falls into place as it's outlined, what does the overall timeline look like for completion?
Well, we're looking at by November, November 30th is the outside date for paving. And the later we can put the trees in, the better, because this kind of weather is not really conducive to planting.
I think in our rigs, Lou, that we require the trees to be put after September anyway, so...
Yeah, so you need, you need to have good weather, and you need to have the ability to water them too, so we'll have to make arrangements with the water to open the hydrant to water.
Any others coming? Yeah, Walter, there...
Well, just recalling one other discussion about the street trees. It really wasn't street trees, it was trees around the retention basin there.
Yeah, those are included in whatever we're going to do. Whatever's shown on the plan, pretty much planted as...
The, the basin trees, which are conifers, are all shown on, they're not on, this plan is street trees. The conifers are all shown on the subdivision plans.
But weren't they planted and then failed, or planted but not in accordance with the plan?
Well, some, all that matters is by the time that he comes for release on the street trees, that the, the conifers that are going to be in the detention area are going to be alive and complying with the plan that's on file.
Right, okay.
What we did staggering here was the street trees, because we had the utilities and the grass strips that was causing an issue, but they couldn't be planted.
And the homeowners had preferences too.
Right.
Which we already worked out.
Which I think this is the plan that everybody was in agreement, unless somebody's changed him.
Isn't there another thing with the trees being planted in the drainage basin?
Right, those are the conifer trees, the conifer trees.
They don't go in the basin, they go, it's sort of a buffer of...
On the edge.
On the edge.
On the edge, right. So if there's no other questions, folks from the neighborhood here, any questions? Yes. Do we have a, do I have a mic tonight? We don't have a mic. Okay.
I was just wondering if the neighbors maybe, see if you could email it to me, I don't know what that plan was on the street trees, because we, I think we did it like a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
There might actually be people who've moved in since that was done, so...
I have, I have a plan we can stand it on.
Yeah, I have the same, I think I have the same plan from Ray, so... Just something that everyone can kind of look at and refresh on every about it. Yeah, you send me an email, I'll stand it on tomorrow, actually. Thank you. And I'll email it to you. Thank you.
All set? All right, that being said, so I would need a motion to lower the bond for friendly estates to the amount of $105,899. So moved. Second?
Second, with a friendly amendment that that's based on the acceptance of the five items in the letter with the modifications that you outlined tonight.
All in favor? Aye.
Great, thanks very much. We can start it on it right away.
Good, good.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Lou. Oh, well, that is, yeah. Are you?
Thank you. Good night.
7:30?
It's not, 7:26.
7:26, yeah, four minutes. So on the, on the, on the Alexandra Estates, Bob McGee has checked the amount that's on this, of the cost to complete, and has agreed. I think the best thing we can do right now is vote to approve the cost to complete, approve the tri-party agreement, and also approve the lot release form contingent on corrections being made to the tri-party agreement to include Lot 2, and the addition on the cost to complete to include the station and the roadways involved that the bond is covering.
Yeah. The assumption being that the costs described here of 21 and 1 are covering the appropriate amount of paving in both roads.
Right, and the cost to complete at the top should have the road and the station of which it's covering, so we know.
Yeah, yeah.
And like I said, the first one was limited, and this one here has nothing, so we would like him to come in and amend that, and amend the tri-party agreement, and we'll vote right now to sign it when those corrections are made, if the vote passes. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the cost to complete for Alexander Estates.
So moved.
In the amount of, I'm sorry.
Oops, sorry.
Look, in the amount of $103,363.86.
So moved.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'd like a, a vote to approve the tri-party agreement for Alexander Estates, and put is that form G4 to release the lots.
Yep.
Sign the covenant form G4 to release the lots of the subdivision, which are lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Right, subject to the amendment.
Subject to the amendments.
Right.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you can let them know, and then we can start by...
Do you want to vote to release the lots as well?
I think we did that by agreeing to sign the G4, and that's the lot release form. So, I think we're all set with that, so we can get three votes to come sign it after they correct the statements.
I'll let you know, and then it's all set.
Okay, we're all set.
Yep.
Now, 7:30, 18 Union Street, site plan removal.
They're still upstairs with the zoning board, so they might be running a little bit late.
They still are. We have a set of minutes?
We do have seven minutes.
There were two inputs that came to you, one minute, right?
They had one other that Greg's listed as associate member, but he should be listed as well. He's probably just a carryover from the previous one.
Why don't we go through what we have, 15 minutes. If they're not released here by quarter end, I think I'll stop the other public, because I'm not sure what time they'll be done. We'll go over the three, the two form eight plans that we have here.
Sure.
Anyone else want to go?
No, I'm good.
So should we have officially let on the minutes?
No, you didn't.
Shouldn't? Should.
Yes. Who's our clerk? I'm looking.
This guy.
And Walter made two corrections, or anything?
He made one, he made another.
Yep.
All right. So that case, we can have a motion to...
And then Michelle may have a third.
Oh, okay.
Approve the minutes with...
Don't you guys mind attention?
What, what was your correction, Michelle?
Greg is listed as an associate member. I think it's just a carryover from the last.
I see, opposed to full member.
That's right.
Which he now is for his sins.
All right, so motion to approve the minutes from somebody? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's take the A&amp;R plan for 42 Rockwood Road at Woodman Street. Gino has comments here. My understanding is the comments were addressed. The plan was corrected, and the mile hour above the sign has those incorporated.
Is it just for 42?
We'll do one at a time, right?
And we're starting with 42?
Right, yes. So that being said, we could, a motion to approve the A&amp;R plan for 42 Rockwood Road.
Do we have a, do we have any drawings on what they're proposing, or do you want?
We have the mile hour sign.
Yeah, just want to take a look before I...
Thank you. That's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
I don't know which orientation I'm at, though. I mean, is this, which way is the, there's no, okay, all right, I got it. Yep, yep. The school is over here.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so creating this lot.
Yeah.
And again, this does not mean that these are...
The lot 30, Lot 2, is what you're creating.
This does not mean that these are buildable lots, this simply means that they comply the configuration to our zoning, that's all.
Hmm, right.
If we're all set, someone can make a move.
I move to approve the A&amp;R plan for 42 Rockwood Road at Woodman Street.
Sign them.
Sign them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one we have is for number four and five Audubon Trail. Is that just a subdivision of one lot?
That one here is...
That's even more straightforward.
Yeah, it was just a land swap.
They're really changing a lot line between the two lots, that's all.
Okay. Do I have both lots on one plane, Gino?
Yes.
You don't want to confuse us.
So what are we doing? You see, you see the shaded area, they're swapping this, I forgot which is which from here, from this angle, but one goes to this, and the other goes to that, it's the same area.
Yeah. Someone must have needed some land for something.
I was going to say, why would you do that?
Maybe in addition or something.
To get the proper setbacks or something?
Yeah.
It's not what to do.
So the two came into agreement, they're, they're not owned by the same person, are they?
No.
So they had to both come to agreement to that swap of land?
If we're all set, we'll take a motion to approve.
And by filing this, we know that both parties, you know, agreed?
Yeah, they have to, I think they both have to sign the application.
So without that, our vote doesn't mean anything, right?
I know. Yeah, it's not like it really matters.
But, on the other hand, if they, if they do sign it, they need our vote, so there you go, right?
I know, so it's bizarre.
Do we need to sign this one?
Yeah.
Not these, we're setting the miles.
All right, I move to approve and sign the A&amp;R plan for number four and five Audubon Trail.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just a technical thing, but...
Now you tell us.
It's, it's actually, you, you vote to endorse, not approve, because it's approval not required.
Yeah, yeah, endorse.
Keep the endorse.
But that, that was so changed.
Now 194 Main Street, time expired, so that was automatically...
Yeah, they got constructive approval on that.
That was approved by the clerk, so we're not into that at all, that, right? All right, very good.
I missed, I missed all that.
194 Main Street, owned by Mr. Biglari, he subdivided it, but the application was submitted the day after Ray...
Right, we got the email, right?
Right, and we didn't have any time to review it for our next meeting, and he would not give us an extension, so Gina reviewed that plan.
Right.
I had a meeting, a special meeting called, just in case the plan did not meet zoning, because then it would have been approved if we didn't vote. So Gino made the notation, the plan did meet zoning, so there's no need to call it a special meeting, and they become automatically endorsed by the clerk.
Oh, so we don't have to sign them?
Right, correct, the clerk signs it. And if, just, if you remember, this came in a couple of years ago, in a slightly different configuration, where all the frontage of one of the lots was behind the guardrail, so it did not comply with...
I remember that.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Maybe it was never submitted.
It was, I think it was.
Maybe for my town, but it's been...
No, no, it was, it was actually during race time here, so...
Yeah, yeah, well, what the fuck. The one question we had talked about is where this lot here has a small little strip that goes behind this lot. For wide significance, this is a residential zone. There's a 50-foot setback required from a residential zone and a 30-foot green space. By doing this, he's trying to make where this lot not have to comply with all of our zoning by having this little tail on this lot. I think there's questions if they ever come up on whether this really circumvents the spirit of the zoning law, whether this would be allowed, and whether this lot here, even though there's a little strip of land right there, would still be required to comply with our zoning.
Well, isn't, isn't this property here owned by the town?
This is residential zone here.
Fair, but isn't it owned by the town?
I'm not sure.
Isn't that part of the Midway, Midway branch?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right.
So anyways, when this comes back, the issue of the, you know, does that circumvent the law, and is it case law on that? Does case law on spike strips? But I, I don't know about, if, I have not seen anything about this type of thing.
Who experienced this before, Mike?
I have spike strips. I've seen them before. Most zoning has been written to preclude them at this point.
Right, that's right.
I don't know if this would be considered a spike strip per se, or if it's more of a clever way to...
Right, so when that comes, we'll address that at that time.
Yeah, I, I remember talking to Randy about this when the site plan came in.
Right, I did too.
Questioning this configuration of the lot, and whether or not there's going to need to be a subdivision, or not, so...
Right, exactly.
Either is.
Another issue, again, not, it can be addressed on any of our plan, but the circular driveway, right? So right now, that property has two access points, the commercial property and the residential property, I don't know if it's going to stay residential.
This one here?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
But, so in my comments, again, you can't make a condition on any of our plan, but I just suggested that there be an easement, if that other lot is under different ownership, that there be an easement for the commercial property to be able to use that driveway still. But again, we can't do anything to bother it out, until the site plan comes in.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. So we can sign those after the meeting?
Sure.
And?
Right here.
I think that... I think I'm probably going to...
We caught up on our...
Cover this one, actually.
Except for the DRB.
Right.
We're here, designing, so we need to go in on it.
We have an appointment to the designer review board for Arlen Lee. She wants a, she wants a re-turn?
Yes, he does.
A reappointment, right.
A reappointment, yeah, and that is a three-year term? Yes.
Make a motion for that.
Yeah, I move to, to appoint to Arlen Lee, to, through her term, to the designer review board, to expire June, June 30th, 2020.
Second. Discussion?
How many members does the DIB have?
Five, I believe. I think we've got two appointments.
There's David Polley, Paul Condo, Nick DeMistri.
Board selection has one or two, historical has one.
All right, motion, table, seconded. All in favor?
Aye. We have a moment. Can I bring up a couple of other quick things?
Takes care of all our old and new business.
Yeah.
I've got new business, got to do. We had a couple of fellows raise their hand to be an associate member, and I just wondered[1735.33]
We had a couple of fellows raise their hand to be an associate member, and I just wondered what we should do about that. Well, we were caught on that before about not having the associate member on the agenda, maybe we should, for now, talk about that.
Do you want to, do you want me to reach out to the, I think we had three people who expressed interest, do you want me to reach out to them and set up appointments at our next meeting?
Well, I think the rest of us need to talk about that, but I, I, personally, yes, I would like to, to, to talk to them and see what we think. I think we should get that on the agenda and, and clean up.
Is it typical to interview everybody who submits an application, or do you typically?
Unless we know the person.
Okay.
And we don't usually have three, so usually it's like one, right? So it's not a big deal to bring them in and talk for five minutes?
Usually we have to go up on the street with a nap to find somebody.
It's a little bit unusual, but we do like to at least meet them and hear a little bit why they're interested and their background.
So Gina, you're gonna be all set with our Wednesday meetings?
Right?
Yes, down the road.
Are you okay with...
And does the board, does the board mind reading the, uh, the third Wednesday of every month, rather than the second? I still look at, re-elected to cheer the conservation commission, so I would rather not have a meeting Tuesday and Wednesday, back-to-back, I'd rather... Yes, a week right there, sure. If you don't mind, I think the next one's scheduled for the third.
It's actually, technically, the fourth Wednesday, I put it off a week because I'm on vacation and Walt is on vacation.
That's fine, everybody make that next date the twenty-third?
Twenty-third, okay.
The CPC, they meet, we meet on the first Wednesday of every month.
I don't know.
I think so.
So everybody's good with the twenty-third?
So next meeting is on the twenty-third, okay?
And the dates you have down, Betsy otherwise, are the ones you would project to be?
I think I, I think I projected the third Wednesday of each month for the following, for the rest of the year, that works, which, you know, we can, we can change it around if that doesn't work for people.
Kevin, why don't you read the notice of public hearing for eighteen Union Street? And then what I'm gonna do is continue that, and then we're gonna, we'll open the meeting for, uh, Norway Farms.
Alright, notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass GL Section forty-eight, Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section F eleven, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven thirty P M. In room GO seven at Norfolk Town Hall, one Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts. Relative to a site plan application for property located at eighteen Union Street in Norfolk, Mass. Accessors Matt fourteen, block forty-one, lot twenty-one. The applicant, Four Oaks Corp., of Rentham, Massachusetts, is proposing to construct a mixed-use building with associated parking and utilities. The applicant is also requesting an irremovable permit, special permits for pedestrian access, building height, site distance, landscaping requirements, sign regulations, and to allow a drive-up windows through Section I four A five, I four A six, I four A thirteen, I four B one D, I four B two, I five, and I seven A one. The property is located in the B one zoning district, the plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
Maybe should keep those last two sentences.
Yeah, what did you say? Should we repeat the whole thing again?
Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for eighteen Union Street until later this evening?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, since you did so well on that, we take the one for Norway Farms.
A couple more numbers and letters, I mean, this one.
The applicants here for Norway Farms?
Rick Goodrow, the engineer, is...
Also on eighteen Union?
Also on eighteen Union Street, which is also with the zoning board at the moment, so...
Yeah, we're perfect.
Yeah, it's, uh...
Hold on to this one.
He can open it.
Could, um, talk about Toys End.
What's that?
Toys End.
Yeah, if there's more discussion with Gary, we can talk about that. Does everybody know the status of that? I'm not sure if you got an email from Betsy or not.
Oh, I saw with Bada's proposal.
Right, that's all I saw, so, I thought the proposal was very complete also, so they're hooking up the time to review and videotape that, witness it. Right?
Yep.
No date yet, correct?
No, I'm just waiting for the funds from all the, and then we can work on the schedule.
Alright, and then you will take that videotape, you'll match it up to the first videotape, and...
Both?
Right, and then you will notice if any discrepancies in the degree of the cracking, any structure change, right? Alright, and then we'll have that report, as I was telling Gary here, who's a resident, the change in that, or no change in that, will help us determine what type of fix would work, based on that, correct?
Yes, what's most appropriate.
Right, so that's why we're doing this first, if we start off on the right path, we wanna make sure we go... Funny, on this particular thing, I, I, really, if we end up doing this with a, with a filler pipe, really, I think the board ought to consider that where this has already have a substantial amount of crack, I think we ought to consider having the Pulte people place some type of a surety bond on this, and probably have it last for a number of years, just to make sure that we're not stuck down the road with anywhere around a million dollar, we have a road construction. I don't think they will disagree with that or not approve, because their, their other alternative, they're hoping that they can get a filler pipe, their other alternative is to reconstruct all of the drainage and the whole subdivision, which is a major job, but, that being said, if we allow them a way that is engineering-approved, not to say it's a hundred percent, I still think we might wanna place a surety bond from them for the town, just to give us some coverage in case something down the road happens again.
And then, let's say they're done, their warranty period is over, and something does happen, we pull that bond and contract it ourselves, is there a legal process to pull that bond, similar to the other bonds we've been holding?
We'll have the bond set up with the attorney, and just knowing that what happens down the road, if something requires that, I would guess that maybe we can have some type of agreement backed up by a bond, and have criteria for the town to pull that bond if X, Y, or Z happens, and have there be no recourse from that company to, you know, stop the funding from, so... If you have concrete steps or measurements on what really triggers the release of a bond, if you have that with an agreement in advance, we wanna take out then the option of fighting the release of the bond, and, you know, tying us up in costs, we wanna make that kind of finite right at the agreement, so I, I think that's something the attorney should look at, and come up with a, a plan for that. At the same time, we might, we might wanna, we might wanna add into that the, the water services, and perhaps the, well, we can't do the septic pipes, because they're owned by the residents, but we might wanna tie in the, the water piping and the valves and all that to that same bond, because that rarely is in the same ground that was filled by the drain system, so if they were filling the drain system with fresh ledge, really, if the water pipes were there, granted, the water pipes are down five feet, with the drainage pipe could be down only two feet, so there's less of a chance the water pipes are gonna go, but I think maybe we could wrap the whole thing up and write one bond, just to protect this road, but we get the town, also, it's the option to, to not approve the roads, which means that they remain vulnerable for the time until they are approved, but that really does the service to all the residents there, and gets them into a different quid pro quo, so I, I don't think that probably would be the best way to do it, you know?
Would another approach be asking if they'd be willing to extend their warranty period on certain elements, like you're saying, water, or this, for extended period of time? I mean, I would almost imagine what you're proposing is more attractive to them, but I don't know.
Right, right, I think that we leave that up to the legal, so that even if the money's placed aside for down the road, there's an agreement with this, we're pretty much covered, we could pull it based on these events happening and just do it. And maybe something will be in there to let them repair it themselves, under our supervision or whatever, I know the town would probably...
It's like a first right of refusal or something.
Right, right, yeah, or have an outside contractor, which probably would be the case, because they don't have their own road team, so they would probably hire an outside contractor anyway. And then one of the issues with that roadway, there's three different road contractors in there over different times, so... I have to bring that up, I just wanted to bring my, bring my Gary then to that, that they, the Pulte said that they're also going after those road contractors in court, and that might slow down the, the fix, whatever it turns out to be. So just be aware that that process is going on in parallel with what we're trying to do here.
Okay, oh, there was a, sorry, there was a comment two meetings ago about the existing eight hundred fifty thousand dollar bond, and, and I don't know if this committee was going back to investigate that, to increase that, but, you know, it seems you're talking about a different bond, now the surety bond.
Oh, yeah.
Were you able to increase the eight hundred fifty thousand dollar?
We never went that method yet, really. To increase a bond, another project, you really have to have justification to increase it, which means you'd have to do some type of engineering work, and come up with an amount to show that this amount is insignificant. So right now, we're just, I think that's a cash bond, isn't it? I believe the eight fifty is a cash bond the town's holding, so we're just holding that in place, and when we find a, a resolution to the, to the drainage, then we could probably add to that with an outside surety bond and some type of agreement.
And, and does the timing appear that they might have a fix by the fall, as...
The last that I heard, they were trying to get the funds for the investigative process allocated this week, it hasn't happened yet. Once that happens, we will coordinate with them, and I would anticipate within the next three or four weeks, get out there, review the work, coordinate with their engineer, come up with a recommendation that both sides are amenable to about a suitable repair methodology. And then, if I'm thinking what they're going to wanna do is what they end up doing, which is some sort of a trenchless rehabilitation or repair, those are generally not, they don't take a lot of time.
Good.
You have to get the contractor, they have to come out and set up, but long, short, long answer somewhat shortened is, yes, they could do it this long.
Good, thanks.
Since we're pretty much handcuffed with one issue for two public hearings, and is there somebody else who wanna go over before I call it? Do you have ten or a break? Just a couple of quickies, Kevin, Kevin and I went to the housing production plan meeting Monday night, and... As, as you all may know, or may recall, the board, our board, and the board of selectmen are the ones who must ultimately approve this housing production plan in the month of October.
Right.
So, just to be aware that that's the timeline that we're working under, that's, yeah, Kevin, you've got one.
I'm good.
Okay. So that, as the time progresses and that revisions of the plan occur and pop up on email, be sure to read it, so that when we get to October, you're familiar with it and ready to approve it or whatever.
So they've got another workshop planned September fourteenth?
September fourteenth, correct, and, what did I miss?
I mean, just that the first workshop was really centered around goal-setting, a small group talks about where the needs are, and the second workshop will be more of a defined plan, setting up a roadmap for ourselves to really build this housing production plan for approval.
And on the same kind of note, a while back, we approved the, the open space plan, and a new version of that has appeared on email, and...
I have a hard copy in the office.
Yep, and it's about a hundred, somewhat pages, so, in your spare time.
Thanks to Gina.
And you can review that. Is the housing production plan gonna involve any potential zoning changes? Not that I've seen so far.
So.
Right here. But it might, I mean, who knows, they're, they're, they're coming up with different ways to, to increase the form of a housing production, so it might. Alright, well, we've got a minute, any news that anyone can report on the search for razor replacement? Yeah, they're actually bringing it out to a, a headhunter, lack of a better term, so they're gonna be hiring somebody that specializes in this type of search, to see if they can probably find or steal a candidate from a different comparable town. Recruit, yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's built on the way, right, recreate the wheel, and you can take some houses. And, everybody doesn't know, not that the Lawrence Street, our subdivision, isn't big enough, we just had a filing for Cranberry Meadow, which is the subdivision that was walked away from ten years ago across the street. And the Cranberry Meadow one is on a pretty conspicuous hill, and it has twenty lots involved, I think they're coming to us for an open space plan.
Yeah, next meeting.
And the issue that was pulled years ago is because there's no town water there, they require to run a water line all the way from Park Street all the way to Frank, and the cost of the water was excessive, so Scott Paulville, who's developing the old bucket, the bucket man before, and this other person decided that the cost to run the water about a mile was prohibitive, so both subdivisions became withdrawing. I think now that Tommy has to run the water line, it's kind of interesting, run the water line to the first entrance of his subdivision, although I think he's gonna be talking, have run it to both entrances, now the Cranberry Meadow subdivision now is gonna have access to a water line right in Lawrence Street, which means that all they gotta do is connect in and run it up Brett Farm Road, and they have their water without running it a mile, so that's gonna be interesting on who's gonna be responsible for what line.
Doesn't Brett Farm Road already have water?
Right. None of those houses, right, none of those houses have water. So I think on Lawrence Street, they were gonna run the water line a certain way to give those other roadways, either drive Brett Farm Road, or a few others, the opportunity of town water by running the main, the main line right down Lawrence Street.
So this Cranberry is actually on Lawrence, not on...
No, it's... Yeah.
It actually connects through, I believe, Brett Farm Road. Is Cranberry Meadows a forty V?
No.
No, no, just a street.
Yeah, open space preservation.
Yeah. Howard Daley is the applicant. Howard Daley is the applicant.
Paddix and Corrells. He was the original applicant for Toys End Farm.
It could have been before you. I mean, I know we've looked at Toys End then.
Why don't we take a five-minute break and see if I can hunt down Liquid Row and get this thing started? Yeah?
Can I hold you there, wrapping up? You guys all set? Are you done with them?
We're all set upstairs if...
Yeah, we're already, we're waiting, he's gonna grab a glass of water.
You might have to go upstairs, too, and I don't think there's a water pool down there.
Are they all set, everybody?
By the florist.
Yep.
That florist, the florist.
We've already read the hearing, so now we will continue the public hearing for eighteen Union Street. No microphone, guys, so... Tom, you wanna get started, or?
I have the mic, photo, just...
Talk loud tonight, there's one mic there on the table, that's gonna pick up everybody.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Tom DePlacido Junior here with Four Oaks Corporation, for, actually, a multitude of special permits and site plan approvals from the planning board, I'll, I'll list those out here in just a second. But this hearing tonight has to do with the property adjacent to Town Hall, eighteen Union Street, which is, if you're looking out straight, just to the right over here, that faces the roundabout between Liberty Lane and the corner of Union Street. What's proposed there is actually to have a permanent home for a Norfolk Community Federal Credit Union, which actually is sort of displaced right now with everything, and looking to have a permanent home in this location, as well as some other service retail establishment businesses on the first floor, and some apartments on the second and third floor. While we're here before the planning board tonight, what we're requesting is site plan approval, also, a request for special permit in accordance with I four A five for allowing less than seventy percent of the length of the pedestrian way level with the street facade not to have accessible doors, windows, or transparent elements on the wall. Second special permit request is in accordance with I four A six, to allow the building height to extend up to forty-six feet. A special permit in accordance with I four A thirteen, to allow a reduction in site distance to be as shown on the site plan. Request special permit in accordance with I four B one D, to allow the landscaping to be installed and constructed as shown on the site plan and landscape plan. Request special permit in accordance with I four B two, to allow the setback to the build-to line to be shown as, as in the site plan. Request special permit in accordance with I five, which refers to F nine, to allow larger signage as shown on the site plan. And number seven, request special permit in accordance with I seven A one, to allow a drive-up window for financial businesses shown on the site plan. Here with me tonight, actually, is Rick Goodrow from United Engineering, who talked about the site plan, the engineering design, Matt Merva from Buller Engineering, to talk about the landscape design, he's a landscape architect, Mr. William Scully, who's a traffic engineer for the site, and Mr. Paul Frederick from HBA Design that did the architecture. What I did wanna do is just talk a little bit about what we've been through and some of the comments we've received. I think the board's aware that we did have a letter of correspondence and recommendations from the fire department. We've received those, and, and, you know, we'll abide by those, and things have no comment with that, that's, that's no issues. We also had a letter from the planning consultant, with a bunch of topics that need to be addressed and looked at and reviewed. Consultants, an idea that I mentioned, will address those comments. Consultants, an idea that I mentioned, will address those comments. And then also, we had comments from the design review board, which we'll look into as well. They had some comments about maybe eliminating a couple of parking spaces, adding a couple of islands, and maybe adding some parking spaces in various locations with this as well. And one important thing that I'd like to mention that goes along with the design review board and with this is also, what we have here is, we have the entrance coming off of Liberty Lane and our own independent entrance, but there's also been thought that there may be a better entrance that could be combined with Town Hall as a four-way intersection. We do have an alternative plan that would require an easement from the town of Norfolk and actually is been looked at and reviewed from a prior town planner that thought it would make much more sense to have a four-way intersection and be safer for traffic from that reason with it. So we do have that alternative.
Can you put that, you got that drawing?
We do have that drawing and Ricky talked about that in his presentation. So I just wanted to give a basic overview of everything that we're going to talk about here tonight with things. Couple of the design review board comments where we did propose sort of a cream color for the building. I'm just going to leave with this with the board. It was a sandpiper color. One of the recommendations is to go to a darker color. I did tab two other colors on here, the board can look at that, just if they want to have any comments or think about what the design review board has said. Also, they had some discussion about retaining walls, and we do have some informations and pictures about what we're proposing for retaining wall in here, a ready rock type of system. And actually, the landscape architect, Matt Merva, will talk about that. With that said, so an overview of the project here with things, I'd like to turn it over to Rick Gudrow, and then actually from there to Paul Frederick, Matt Merva, and then Traffic to talk on things last. Rick, if you could take it over.
Sure. Good evening, Rick Gudrow with United Consultants. Betsy, could you please go to slide three? So this is the site layout plan. As you can see, the building location is proposed here, and there's an access point coming in off of Liberty Lane and an exit point at Liberty Lane as well, as well as a exit point at Union Street. The parking is proposed to be located in this area here. There is a proposed drive-through lane, an ATM drive-through for the credit union portion of the site. Let's see if you could please go to the next slide, number four.
Oh, I'm sorry?
So the site is proposed to be serviced with town water. Utilities, electric, telephone, cable, et cetera, will be underground, transformer location is there, water connections will be made there for both domestic and a fire suppression, a fire system. Septic system will be located in this area here, and, excuse me, the stormwater system is proposed to consist of a capture system consisting of catch basins with deep sumps and hoods to provide treatment of the stormwater. Ultimately, the stormwater will be routed through a water quality unit to provide 80% additional TSS removal prior to discharge into the Union Street drainage system. We have met with the DPW director as well as the former town planner, and we have reviewed the town study of the town center area, which consisted of the Union Street drainage system as well as the Main Street drainage system. We provided the calculations to show the increase of a 100-year storm event for this project from what was existing on the site at the time of the study to what's being proposed now. There is a slight increase in the rate and volume of runoff. It is accommodated for in the Union Street drainage system. The site is also bordered to the south by a residential property. We are proposing retaining walls to be constructed in this area here, single retaining wall, starting at basically zero in height, approximately five to six feet here, coming up to a high point here. The two retaining walls are approximately eight to 10 feet in height as it comes around here and then it transitions back down. So the site is gaining elevation as it comes up from the street in both directions, from Union Street and Liberty Street, such that when you're in the parking lot, you'd be looking at the face of two eight to 10-foot-high retaining walls and then again transitioning down here. So if you could now go back to sheet eight, I believe it is, Betsy, that alternative layout?
Is that me, sir?
That one.
Sorry?
So what we've also done, as Tom had mentioned, was provide an alternative layout, which we utilized the existing driveway entrance into Town Hall, expanded to 24 feet in width, and provide for access into the site in that fashion with a modified parking configuration. So that is a proposal that existed. Tom has done some research with respect to some easements to be granted by the town, and he can speak to that later. We have just come from a meeting with the Board of Appeals to allow for a reduction in the setback to the residential property from 50 feet to what we're proposing here of approximately 10 to 11 feet for the parking lot. The design review board had suggested, if you could go back to slide number three, Betsy, please.
Rick, why don't we keep the design review board's comments for after the engineering part, okay?
Well, this has to do with the engineering, because it may make a change to the site.
That one, Rick?
Nope.
Or no, the other side?
The other side. What the design review board has suggested is the addition of two islands and elimination of two parking spaces, and the addition of those spaces down in this location here.
Just so the members are aware, when the design review board makes their comments, they make the comments to the planning board, it's the planning board's ultimate decision to decide which comments we want to take, which we don't, which we want to modify. So they're basically simply offering us a suggestion on things like height of walls or colors or whatever. In the end, we take those comments, which is why I was looking to keep it separate, and decide which ones we want to follow through with and which ones we don't care to follow through.
Rick, question, Rick, on your alternative entrance, do you pick up more parking spaces or do you keep the same number? Same number.
Same number.
So they were suggesting a reduction of the space in here to break up this aisle, and a reduction of the space somewhere in here to break up this aisle, and then the addition of two or three spaces in there, which would require some regrading, some additional, you know, landscaping, and that parking area would be getting closer to the residential area. So we certainly would like to have some discussion and input from the board.
All of the, the height of the wall, if you put it down the side lot line to the residential area?
Go to the next slide, please. So right here, we have a parking lot grade of 208, the top of a wall of 213 with some grading in the middle.
So how high is the wall?
The wall's really not high because there's a slope there, so the wall's just commencing there. But it's five feet above the parking lot. It's going to be, you know, six inches high as it comes to the end.
The neighbor.
Correct.
All right.
So then the wall, at this point here, we have a 208 grade, and we have a top-of-wall grade of 217, so it's about eight to nine feet high here. And again, from the wall transitioning down to the parking lot, there will be some slope or...
I'm interested in the height of the wall on the neighbors. The neighbors going to see none of the wall?
No.
All right. So this is all going to be built into the hills?
It's going to be built into the slope. So when you're in our parking lot, you're going to then see the wall.
Okay.
They will be looking over the top.
Just want everybody to understand that, that this wall is going to be viewed from inside.
There will be a fence. Currently, there's a six-foot-high stockade fence on the neighborhood property, but there will be a fence on top of it.
Fence on top of the wall, okay.
What kind of fence are you talking about?
Probably a stockade fence, I would think. I mean, Tommy, we can talk about...
We can talk about it, yeah. Which other fence that the board would like to see and the neighborhood would like to see as well? Whether it be the stockade or something that's, you know, you don't see as much, maybe a colored chain link or something, whatever, whatever would work better.
You know, so, you know, as I said, when you get down in this area, these walls are about eight feet high. But again, the neighboring property is up at, you know, elevation 240 here, and we're down at about 210. So they're about 30 feet higher than us up on top of this hill. At their house, their house is around elevation 215, and we're at elevation 208.
If you use the same rivalry that the Town Hall has, excuse me, will you be tying that Walter and I had walked that area a few days ago? The Town Hall is separated by perhaps a seven to nine-foot wall based on whereabouts you are. Will you be tying into that wall, Rick, if you have an egress that's joint with the Town Hall?
We're, I'm sorry, John, I'm not following you. Where are their walls?
Look on your drawing to the lower left there, there's a wall, you can see that guy there.
That here?
Yeah. It doesn't look like it ties into your wall, though.
No, it does not.
It doesn't, it's all by itself.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, our tie-in point would be down here in front of Town Hall. This wall actually, you know, you look at that wall from the rear parking lot.
You do, yes.
You know, it's a wall retaining the earth on this side to the rear of the 20 Union Street property, if you will.
Well, some of it's 18, but yeah.
Yes, yes. Correct.
So at the highest point, the wall from the parking lot is how high?
It's 229 to 10 to 11, about 18 feet, 19 feet.
You got another terrace that wall?
We have, we are proposing two walls in this area here.
So the combination of both walls is the 19 feet?
Correct.
So each wall would be eight feet?
Eight to 10. Yep.
Rick, there's a row of hemlocks separating the town property all the way down to Liberty Lane, right along the property line. I don't know exactly where the line falls, but you would be retaining those or taking them out if they fall on the 18 Union property?
Well, we'd certainly like to keep them, yeah, but we are going to have to do some excavation for some destruction of the walls in close proximity to the property line.
Basically, on the terrace pot, if you put plantings on that terrace pot, you won't see the second eight or nine feet of wall by the plantings.
That's correct.
So from the parking lot, you'll only be looking at eight feet of wall.
Actually, is Matt correct?
Those aren't super tall plantings there.
They what?
They're probably four to five-foot-tall plantings that would be on the upper terrace level between the two walls. So it's not going to hide the whole wall, but it'll hide some of it.
But they grow.
Right.
I was wondering if there might be an opportunity from that roadway, from Town Hall building, to make a pedestrian connection with steps similar to what they did at the backside of Walgreens, somewhere.
Pedestrian connection in there?
Yeah.
Sure.
Wonder what they get on the next one.
That's probably a good idea.
If it is connected with a common driveway, I mean, definitely, we can make it a little bit wider or something like that to make the pedestrian egress know where that driveway would connect and things. And if it doesn't, then we can look at some type of egress.
Can I just ask our consultants a procedural question? We have multiple special permits here. Are we allowed to combine the special permits and approve them all as one, maybe perhaps have two? One for the special permits we approve and one for the ones, if any, that we don't approve? So you can break it that way?
Yes.
Other question is, were there tying into town drainage? I believe that's going to be a special permit, too. I don't think you can just tie into town drainage. You probably know that, right?
Well, we've talked to the DPW and the former town planner.
Yeah, but it's not their jurisdiction. Basically, so I believe this probably will be, what, a waiver or...
A waiver, because the rule requires...
All right, so they'll probably need a waiver because they're not keeping the drainage on their property, number one, and then they'll need a second waiver to put the stormwater into the town drainage system.
Well, Rick? Well, I think that, as Rick says, that's, the drainage system, connected to the drainage system, I would think would be a DPW authorization.
I don't think so.
No?
I don't think so. I know that the DPW would do the calculations to make sure that the structure there would be able to hold the runoff that's going into it, but right now, we had this with a couple of issues up on Main Street. And I know on Main Street, there's a town center drain system that was done with the Interceptor special permit 10 years ago, that limits any new connections from the center of town into the town drainage. And it went through a special permit under honorable condition. The good news is on this project here, I don't believe this is part of that center of town drainage that goes over the town pond, I think this is separate. So I think the planning board would just have to find out where this water is actually going and to make sure the water could accommodate, yeah, the flow. Because, you know, we have, you'd have the opportunity for every person that has a water in their basement situation to want to tie into town drainage to alleviate the problem.
Well, at a minimum, your waiver to allow drainage off-site, you would want to know.
Right.
You can't just say, okay, put it off-site.
We could combine all into one, maybe one thing.
So that waiver is listed in your review, Gino, just the one to request that it be sent off-site? That's already been in the review, but it does not speak to where it's going.
Then you definitely commission the town to put it to the drainage. And Gino could be right, perhaps it is a DPW thing, but I'm not sure. Anyway, you'll have your calculation of how much runoff anyway, right?
We've done that. That's been filed with the board.
Okay, good.
And we've done a narrative, we've included some of the study that we've done for the town center drainage project, both for the study of Main Street, which we rarely stayed away from, but more the Union Street side, where we're proposing to tie into, and that is included in the stormwater calculations that we submitted. So that includes the site civil pot, and we can turn it over to Paul at this point.
Just one last question on that wall. What is the wall, what is the proposed construction of all? What is it going to be?
Matt Merva from Land...
You'll cover that, all right, okay.
We'll be discussing that. We do have some questions on Gino's comments, I don't know if it makes sense to go through them one by one or...
Just let me tell the audience here that we haven't done a stormwater review from our outside consultant, that'll be at the next meeting, so Rick has presented this, Mike has a better hunch now that what he'll be looking for. But, yeah, I think at this point, because I don't think you can answer all of Gino's comments, why don't we go through Gino's comments right now, and why doesn't the board talk about the waivers that they're looking for right now and see if we can sort of get that in a direction? I think that's kind of important, Gino.
Just the waivers, not the special permits?
Really? Yeah, well, anything, well, if it involves a special permit or a waiver, I think we should talk about, talk about both, just to see where everybody stands. And also the other comments that, actually, them all, were the comments that require changes for the plans, maybe Rick can give you. You had this document from before, right?
Yes.
All right, so you've got to get to reveal it.
Yes.
All right, why don't you just start right at the top?
Okay, and I'd like to start by saying that when I review the plans, I do not have the landscape plans or the building elevations and such. Some of my comments relate to those plans, which, you know, have been addressed, because I just didn't have those to look at. Comment number two regarding the parking, I thought I heard Rick say just now that both configurations have the same number of spaces, but I counted more on the alternate configuration. There were 31, I thought, and only 28, 28 were required based on square footage, but I thought there were three additional ones on the, anyway, that can...
Regardless, we're all, we have excess, but I think the question is that we need to go to the builder commissioner and get a determination from him that the parking space is accounted for.
Yes.
Okay.
Number three, I don't think it's an issue, but the prohibition against parking in the front yard, it's not an issue on the conventional layout, on the alternative, it's probably not, because those three spaces that are faced Liberty Lane are to the side of the building and they're no closer than the building, so, but it's just something to just verify. The landscaping on the interior of the parking lot has already been addressed, that was my comment number four. The parking lot specifications, I know in email and responses, you raised that too, but they're, that references down to comment number 31, but there seem to be conflicting requirements in the rules and regs, where in one squad, it says they need to comply with the residential street, neighborhood street requirements, and another squad says secondary street requirements.
So our design is proposed to comply with the secondary street, which is...
Which is more rigorous anyway, so you get that covered. Minor thing, but reflectorized lines is required and...
Yeah, that's something we'd like to add a waiver request to, to just use a conventional paint to strike the parking lot and not use the reflectorized paint. Yeah, that's something we'd like to add a waiver request to, to just use a conventional paint to, to strike the parking lot and not use the reflectorized paint.
Anybody have an issue with that?
Is that commonly done?
Uh, off-street loading?
Yes, we can show a loading space.
Okay. What desire you have looked at it? Uh, comment number nine had to do with pedestrian ways and street trees because I didn't see the landscape plan. Pedestrian way oriented, the building appears to comply with that. My comment number eleven, I, I heard you say that you have requested a special permit regarding the seventy percent of the length thing, doorways and windows. And then you've also addressed the, the height and, um, the extra height, you've already requested a special permit for that.
Is the frontage being not less than, uh, seventy percent, is that a special permit or a waiver?
Special permit.
Just, so Paul Freder, the architect from HP Design, we, we meet that requirement. So, I don't know if it was filed, but the seventy percent.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, I don't like Gino, we had the architecture.
Right, I mean, we have ninety-five six windows, you know, windows opening, so essentially we have ninety-five six, so seventy percent would be sixty-six linear feet, we have seventy, sixty-nine linear feet, so we need that.
Oh, okay, I, I thought, I made that note, but I thought I heard, heard you say that, that you would apply for that.
Some of these special permits, just so the board knows, we, I did request because we were close.
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, we just wanted to make sure we were covered.
Does that comment thirteen talk about?
Uh, eleven, eleven, but thirteen also is similar.
So eleven's not relevant then?
No. Okay, then that's one. Fifteen, again, has been addressed, they applied for the, to be less than fifty feet from the residential district, S C B A, and same with the, oh, no, the green belt is there, planning board waiver. To have less than a thirty-foot green belt along the residential property line. Again, a landscaping issue is the forty square feet of landscaping for each foot of frontage, up to twenty percent, but I think, uh, I didn't see the landscape plan, but I think you had calculations on this plan that showed more than twenty percent.
Is it still put in for that special permit?
We put into it just so we had for the flexibility.
But you think you comply with them?
Actually, Matt could answer that and then.
I believe we do, yes, we've provided.
Okay.
What was thirteen?
The build-to line, you requested a special permit for that, for not complying with that? I think you complied to some extent, you may not comply fully, is that, or is that a, another one that was in case you didn't comply?
We, we, we put in some of these special permits, like I said, just in case the plan's modified during the hearing process, that we made sure we had them in. Um, that one we applied for, just because, um, I don't think we a hundred percent understood, it was sort of, you know,
I don't think we were very helpful.
Vague and it's a gray.
It seems to be parallel to the frontage line, it's one of the requirements.
Right, which makes it possible.
And our, and our distances vary, so we just wanted to make sure we were covered.
Signage plans, again, I heard you mentioned sign, you wanted a larger sign than required.
Building bounded signs on the architectural plans.
Okay.
And Tom did request a special permit for the size of those signs, I believe, Tom?
And it, actually, Paul can show where they are, and then we were actually looking to, um, propose a sign on the side of, uh, it'd be the left side elevation for, for the, uh, federal credit union. And depending on which, if we go with the alternative layout and entrance, the design review board actually made a, a suggestion that we probably have to have signage directing to eighteen Union Street and Town Hall, to, you know, in that area. So that, that would be something that the, the board would need to consider if we do end up, um, with that type of access.
And as it stands now, we didn't, we don't have, you know, all the tenants, we don't know, but essentially we just put, the, the site here and on the tower, there would be four spaces for, just for, uh, the credit union and retail tenants, and that was all we weren't looking to like, pop them on the side of the building.
Okay. Bicycle parking, I didn't see.
Yeah, we've added a bicycle parking spot to the rear of the building to accommodate the two bicycles that are necessary, parking, bicycle parking spaces that are necessary.
Okay, there's a site plan rule about breaking down how the land is, is divided. You have some of it, but not a hundred percent, not everything that was asked for in the, in the rules.
Yeah, we can, we can take care of it.
Yeah, that's an easy, easy fix. Traffic volume and flow, I know you had a traffic study and, uh, but the flow, it's pretty obvious from the plan, but usually there's arrows on the, please.
Are these one-way in and one-way out?
Um, this is the Hitchenson exit, and this will be an exit only.
Yeah, that's, so that's where it just needs to be specified. I had a comment number twenty-five regarding the photometric plan, but again, I saw that afterwards and it does comply with the, with the rules. Well, actually, there is some spillage onto the, onto, um, Union Street, right by the entrance, which is not, it's, it's minor, but it's, it's above point two-five, but it's not a bad place to have some extra light in it.
We could request a waiver from that, which we've done in the past.
Yeah, I had, we already talked about the drainage off-site. And, um, what roof runoff, you're, you're proposing everything, all the, including roof runoff, runoff to go in that same drainage system?
Right.
The maximum sized vehicle to service the, the property, did you designate that?
We can provide that.
Okay. And my last comment had to do with the retaining walls, which, um, which have already been discussed, you know, that's it.
One question on number twelve, can you, can you just talk to me about the height, I can't read the drawing from here, but forty-six square inch here that we discussed.
Well, I think maybe, I don't know, this will be easier to see. Essentially, from the grade, these drawings show everything from the slab.
Yeah.
So from slab to ridge, and that's how the, in this district, we go right to the ridge, we have forty-one foot, four inches from the slab to the ridge.
Yeah.
Then we need, we needed to go in, because it's a corner lot, um, and we spoke with Paul Bullock, and there was a number of ways we looked at this, but the final, these were a couple of different ways, but the final determination was, we take the midpoint of the property line from the middle of the arc to this property line along Liberty, which is over here, and we take the same thing from this property line to the center of the arc, which is over here, so it's a midpoint. At this midpoint, we have two oh seven, at this midpoint, we have two oh seven four.
Yeah.
So, two oh seven four plus two oh seven, the average of that is two oh seven two.
Yeah.
Which basically gives us from the floor, from this finished floor to the center of the street is two feet eight down. So essentially, if we take the worst case, and we said forty-one five plus two feet eight, our building is forty-four two to the, to the, to the top of that ridge. Okay, so that would be from the average grade, the way they require. This, this piece here is spire tower cupola, similar to what we have here, there's nothing in there, there's not a third floor, and that can go up by, you know, up to eighty feet if you.
Indeed, but how tall is it?
Uh, it's like fifty-six feet.
Fifty-six.
Your, your, your tower here, from the floor to the top is about fifty-four inside, so it's like fifty-six to fifty-eight.
Right, okay.
So it's, it would be relatively the same thing.
Yep, thank you. So that's special permit, also a question.
Gino, quick question, you had said that a waiver was requested on the traffic study, but it sounded like a traffic study was done, so is that waiver gonna be removed, or is it valid?
Well, it wasn't a full traffic study, it was a traffic report, I think.
So the waiver's still? Copy it to Ralph from the, uh, Harpe.
If, if a waiver's requested for, for traffic.
Attached to?
The eighteen Union Street, it's the very last page.
Okay. Does anybody in the board have any, uh, comments on the items that are gonna be special permitted or are being asked to be waived?
Is there a basis by which they're requesting that no traffic study be required? Has there one been done recently that you're working off of or something?
When, uh, the town planner was here and had discussions with them, felt as though there was enough traffic studies that were done on other projects that are going on right now, both in the center and things, that, um, he said an abbreviated traffic, you know, uh, report summary, summary would be adequate.
Anything else?
Um, I think in, in general, regarding the number of parking spaces, and I'd, I'd definitely wanna complete our review, but I'm leaning towards saying the absolute minimum rather than having more, only because of that sensitivity and proximity to the neighbor. And so the thought being, if we could eliminate and come down to the twenty-eight rather than have a few extra, then at that pinch point where you get really tight on the corner near Union, we could possibly alleviate some of those, um, setback issues a little bit, help mitigate that a little bit. So that's sort of where I'm feeling about the parking right now, but I kinda wanna hold on a firm opinion until I see everything.
And keep in mind, if we add the two islands that the D R B has suggested, it would make it even closer to the parking lot.
I know, that's why I don't like that comment so much, I mean, I like the idea of the additional landscaping, but, again, reducing down from thirty-one to twenty-eight could mitigate, you could still maybe have one of the islands and reduce the parking, maybe get it all.
As you went out from the neighborhood property, what part of the building will they be seeing with all the? The line of sight, what will they be seeing?
Will they see just like the roof shingles, will they be looking at the second floor?
Rick, can you? I can, you tell me.
I see they're probably there looking at the.
Do you have a section?
There are about two fifteen at the driveway right here.
Do you guys have a section showing?
That's their, that's their.
Not, not a site.
Greater than driveway at the house is, if you could go to sheet four, please.
Sheet of my honor.
You're on HPA, so it would be our sheet four.
The architectural or?
What did you say, what was the grade up there?
I believe it's two fourteen, two fifteen.
Okay, and this, this gutter line at, on the rear, is at?
Yeah, so their elevation here at the front corner of the house is two fourteen, two fifteen to the, to the rear of the house, uh, coming up the driveway. So we're at an elevation two oh eight for the parking lot here, or roughly six to seven feet below the driveway grade there. And then, um, the slab is at two ten.
Right, so there's, like, the second floor would be two twenty-two, so the second floor is a few feet higher than their ground.
So six foot person working up the middle would be looking in the middle of the second floor then?
Yeah, if you, if I was standing on their ground and, you know, yeah, so, what did you say it was? Their, their property, about two fifteen?
Two fourteen, two fifteen.
So two twenty.
Twenty.
So two twenty, and I'm two twenty-two, so my eyes.
Grade of second floor?
Excuse me?
Two twenty-two at the grade of second floor?
Yeah, it's two ten for the first floor, and I got twelve feet floor to floor, so at, at the rear, um, my head that I'm looking for starts here, so it's basically a story above the ground, and it's all floored, so.
My other comment on the special permits is regarding the thirty-foot green belt along the shared property line, which although I'm not as, um, strong on the amount of footage, I absolutely wanna see the careful treatment of that edge and planting and landscaping and fence. I think our chain of the fence would look super ugly, so I'm just gonna put that out there right now.
I think we'll ask the senior engineer to give us a, I think we'll give us a, a visual of what that wall would look like on the top of it.
Yep, so that's sort of the other area.
Residential house, okay, I think as a minimum, that's what you should do to get a, a waiver, a thirty-foot, a thirty-foot green belt.
And then I think my third comment as regard to, to, to traffic, I'll be very interested to see what studies been done to date, the results of it, that corner at Union is probably my biggest concern. I really like the alternative plan of the shared driveway, but exiting on Union is a conservative one.
I think, Michelle, when we, uh, wrap up this, this at the end, I think we'd like to approve one or both of the, uh, of the entrances, whether the altero, then the main, or both, or if we have a preference, uh, let them know.
Yeah.
So if they decide to go through town meeting, if there's a preference to not have a joint driveway, then they should probably know that before they go to, or if you insist that there is no alternative entrance, that you want one entrance by itself, then?
My preference is for the shared, I don't like the curb cut so close on the two driveways.
So opens it up more, right, yeah. But we can incorporate that into any final decision.
So I like the alternate, alternate line up, but, um, those are sort of my three areas of concern with the special permits.
Piggybacking on what you said, Michelle, about the, the, the landscape buffer between the, the residence and, and this development, are we gonna hear more about that? We are, okay, so I'll hold my questions.
All right, we're gonna hear more about that right now?
We're focusing to that side, this, the main part of this whole answer, from that residential, we have both ones.
So, uh, just. So to continue on with where Rick started, uh, my name's Matt Murva, with Fuller Engineering, I'm a landscape architect. And we've been working with the team to come up with a landscape plan for the project, uh, and really try to respond to some of the other things that are going on in the, the town center here, continuing the streetscape elements that have been utilized, uh, up and down the streets, uh, some of the wall features that are at the roundabouts and intersections, we're incorporating some of that into our planning uh, to, to really try to knit this into the, the fabric of the downtown here. Uh, so continuing down Union, you see the, the street trees that we've, we've added to the frontage, uh, right behind the sidewalk. And then you can see the existing stone wall feature here on the opposite side of the intersection, we're actually mimicking, mimicking that on, on our property, uh, which is just a small, uh, seat wall height wall feature that shows up pretty well in Paul's sketch here. You can see it right here, it's kind of scalloped into the site and provides kind of a landing from that crosswalk, uh, as you, as you get to it. Uh, and then gentle stair feature that gets you up to an entry plaza that's right outside of the main entrance, and you can see that feature right here. So this sidewalk is kind of at grade with the road, but this one is sloping up to get you into the, uh, the doorway there. And then we have some seat wall features, uh, for people to congregate outside, um, along the, uh, along the roadway there. And then behind that wall, we have a stepped series of landscape elements and then uplighting on the trees and the building that will really showcase, uh, that facade uh, as you enter from, from any direction, really, I think that's gonna look great. Uh, at the, the perimeter of the site, uh, the buffering, we've, we've added evergreens at the top of that existing wall to provide some uh, buffer between the parking and the, uh, the residential, uh, property next door. We've also provided some shade trees along that back edge, we've got, uh, zelkova along the back here, these would be spruce and white pine. And then we are continuing the street trees, uh, as calorie pair, similar to what you have elsewhere in town. We're picking up on some of the, the special paving features that you have elsewhere in town with the, uh, the brick look, these would be permeable pavers uh, in that zone and back here. As Rick mentioned before, the D R B was interested in, in breaking up the parking a little bit, uh, in adding landscape islands in there. Obviously, we wanted, you're, you're gonna provide your input there as well. One of their other comments was to provide a small landscape feature here as you came around the corner into the drive aisle, uh, which would provide a little more buffering on the interior of that, uh, of that lane, and Rick can speak to that if there's anything else that I missed on there. Uh, the, the trash enclosure here would be surrounded by a six-foot stockade, uh, white fence, uh, as well as upright landscaping to kind of soften the look of that as well. And then the retaining walls that we mentioned back here, we're, out here, we're, we're looking at more natural stone, which would be keeping in character with the other stone around the site. Back here, these are more engineered walls, bigger height, uh, we're looking at an engineered system. We're looking at an engineered system similar to, to a ready rock, something like this, I don't know if you've seen this around, but it's, it's a gravity wall system which has, it doesn't look like sort of a standard gravity wall, it's got a little more refined character to it and a little more of a landscape feel. These are some examples of, you know, for color and what, what those look like, and I can pass those around the table as well, but it comes in some, some different shades. So we think that would be a, a good material to use and not have it look like a highway project, because that is, we want to be sensitive to the surroundings, obviously. The lighting, we'd be keeping in, in with the period, if you can flip to the detail sheets, which are, I think, one more. Okay, see, oh, yeah, that was it, sorry, back one. Yep. Right, so that's the lamppost we're, we're proposing there, so it's a traditional lantern style fixture. And then just above that, those are just small uplights that would be at the front of the building, lighting up those, the trees and the landscape and the facades, they'd be directed inward, not directly up, but towards, towards the facade. And then if you flip one more page. Yes, 24. So the benches that we're proposing and the trash receptacles, these are the same ones that are in the rest of the town center, and these are details on the, the low stone walls that are out front. We don't have detailing on the walls for, for the back yet, but this is the system that we, we think we want to use there. Any questions right now on, on landscape?
Yes, sir. If you look at the, the neighbor's house there.
Right here?
Yes, and look at the proposed plantings and trees, they can see right through there to the building, is that, is that not correct?
Yeah, they have a fence along here that I think is about a six-foot high fence, I believe. And then this is the retaining wall, and that's stepping down, so yes, they're looking out over that wall.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it looks like a very short distance between the top of the wall and the edge of property.
Right. Right there, is it pretty?
Have you spoken with the neighbors by chance, any of you?
Nope.
How far is the retaining wall there from the wall line?
Rick, do you know that?
It's about six feet, five to six feet in that area.
Right, so, and it looks like that retaining wall could be brought in a little bit towards your property.
In, in this way?
Yeah, because I, I think that you might want to get, again, with that as the line of sight from that residential neighborhood, a home, I think you'd like to get more extensive planting there.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't think just conifer trees would do it, I'd like to see something like birch plumps in there, a mix with a conifer tree, because the birch plumps grow to 30, 40 feet in five or six years' time, and I think that would break up just looking like a, a handmade, you know, evergreen wall.
I was wondering about some lower shrubbery that's evergreen, maybe some rhododendrons as well, because their side of line is, is so, you know, direct, the conifers are going to grow up, but they're looking out, and so something that's going to be a lower growing shrub as well.
The only problem with that is, is that the fence would, would block the view to that lower growing material.
So I'm saying those are behind?
On their property.
Yeah, or if you push your retaining wall forward a little bit, right?
But the, the fence is right on the property line, so we don't have space on their side of the fence to plant that.
So then that might be a conversation, you know, if they want some additional landscaping to mitigate that view or something, as a negotiated, agreed upon conversation.
I think, I think that personally, I, I think that...
We'll get this, we'll get that.
The landscape islands, it's important, because I'd rather have them as a parking spot personally, and I think the landscaping against the wall in order of viewing it from the commercial, I don't think that's a big deal, I'd rather see you focus on what the first hundred feet back from the road to totally obscure that residential property. Like I said, if you feather that wall in or square the wall in, whatever, see if you get a 10-foot planted bed, you can mix up evergreens and birch plumps or something, things that grow really fast, it's the fastest growing evergreen.
White pine.
White pine, well, that, that kind of should see.
Yeah, that they grow fast.
Yeah, maybe, maybe one in the direct site, but put a couple of decent plants around, including the birch, and I think that'll make it look more natural, that's the question, make it look more natural. You say white pine.
Can we be able to curve that wall in to provide that extra?
Exactly, it's all just empty green space, right? You see what I'm talking about, Michelle?
Any other questions?
Guys, any questions?
I think I cut off Paul, who was about to do architecture.
No, no, I, I, it's not, it's much more important, really, but architecture is always key to myself.
Thank you.
As far as the architecture, I mean, I hit on, hit on everything briefly, but I mean, it really kind of speaks for itself, I think. Building sighting and its, its shape and setbacks and its orientation was all generated from the site, from the bylaws, et cetera. Obviously, we started with the, with the kind of location where it was going to be, we know regulation F7E prohibits parking, and you don't want a seat of parking in the front yard. Also, in this particular parcel, so stating that, we, we knew that the parking wasn't going to be a big field here with the building back up into the corner, but also that would do if it was, because you have this parking here, and this building, as it comes back, grows, 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 and was up the hill. So we knew that that wasn't the right thing to do, even if it was a lot. The next was the pushing this to the edge, and if we held the street line, this isn't downtown, you know, cityscape and Brookline where there's all these buildings in a row and you see this nice city corridor. So we wanted to pull it back enough to get a front yard, a front yard that's not a vast space of, that's, won't be used, but a front yard enough that's still pedestrian oriented as you're coming down here, crossing here, walking on these sidewalks and connecting. So we started to, you know, pull that back for that. Then it was the orientation, you know, does it follow this street line? If it follows this street line and we turn the building like this as you're coming down Union, and we're turning, you're kind of coming to the back side of the building, so we said we really don't want to be turning our, our, orient our building where we're coming up from the side. Also, if we turn this in parallel to this, it would be doing the same thing on Union, if you'd have this slope here of wall, so there wouldn't be a side yard. Right now, what we did is we aligned it with this side, this would be a side yard, this would be all landscaping, all landscaping, so you'd see a building pumping up beyond these trees, and there would be just landscaping, a small opening where the, where the exit is. So it, it kind of fell into place. Well, then when we did this, we had this, you know, we had, we had this odd setback, so we wanted to follow this property line, so what we did is we kind of set back the volumes of this thing, so it, it wasn't, someone else at, at one of the other meetings said, was this, was this random how they went in and out? It wasn't random at all. We wanted this, this parallel line to be, to catch these corners as it went back to the corner, to open up toward the corner, so if I'm coming north or Union or, I'm not closing up in the corner. So that's how the building got sighted, oriented, the front yard, and all. Then once we did that, you know, we said, and I, and you need to have, most of the frontage has to be the doors, windows, et cetera. So they don't want you to just put the building on the street and then turn your back and go on the other side. Also, if we, if the only thing we did was say, okay, here's the front, here's the front doors, it's still a vehicular, you know, society that if you're not getting here, we're all parking here. How do these people get all around, and they run around the building? These businesses can't even sustain themselves when, when I have to park here and I have to run around to here to go to the, you know, the small retail I'm going. So what we did is we, we created a pass-through in the building so that, so on the first floor, this is the rear of the building, so we have this front facade here with entries here, et cetera, but underneath this first floor, there's a pass-through, an open-air pass-through, that if I'm parked out here, I can get through here, I can go there, this is my all-day course from my apartment, so I can go through this and go up there. In the front, I have retail here, I can go in here, I can go down this pass-through, I can go to the credit union, I can go up my course, so that whole thing is this covered overhang where I would go there and I, it's, it's where this tower is. So this porch, this front porch is where I would, I could go, and I could either go in the retail, et cetera. So punching through that building lost retail leasable space, but it really connected the back with the front, it really made it that much more inviting. Then as far as locations and doors, what, what we had done is we, we chose to put these two retail doors over here, even though we have still the amount of frontage and windows up there. And why we tried to do that is, because if I'm arriving at the site, it even disconnecting one even works almost, almost a little better. If I'm going to these retailers or whatever, I'm going to park here, I want to park right in front, I'm not going to park here when I go here. I'm also not going to park here when I'm going to, to the credit union. So we tried to make the building fit where people would naturally go with their, with their vehicles. And like I said, if, if the other option ends up happening, just, I, I, this was just a study for my building, that you see if this, if it ended up, if they can work this out, this is the way it wants to go, these parking spaces for here, for example, if I'm going to this front, I would love to park right here. If I'm going to this or down here, I wouldn't park here. Same thing, if I'm going to these, I would park right here. So the parking locations and the way the building functions all kind of work together, so I'm not forcing you go over there to get, to park over here. So, so the site, the building, and how this thing all kind of pulled together was, was basically by the use of it and all that. The second, so here's the, you know, this is a tentative layout for the credit union, that will change as, you know, as it evolves, as they, you know, don't like this here, they want to widen it or what have you, this could be one or two. But essentially, you come up in the core, there's a stair here, there's a couple apartments out here, there's two apartments here, you know, one bedroom, two bedroom, a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom, and on the upper level, there are two fairly good size, you know, 1,100 to 1,400 square foot, two-bedroom apartments. So, you know, this is something that's a little more upper end type of thing, you know, it's not this, not 10 units up there, a little studio unit. So there'd be one front and back, and then this space that was up here, I mean, this is all under the roof as you can see here, and we poked out in the areas that we needed egress, et cetera. And these two spaces would be like just a tenant use, community meeting, that, that kind of thing, and that, you know, that is tucked under all of these, there's no third floor in any of this. And so that, that tenant's community room, for example, is tucked into this gable, these are bedroom gables, that's a living room, so everything's up under the roof, so it still looks like, you know, a kind of a two-story, so that's how the building evolved, the sighting of the building evolved, and the, the, really the mass of the building.
I think it's such a tough lot, you did excellent job creating the footprint there, and I think that this, if you read the, the streetscape zoning in our bylaws, this pretty much covers most of what the streetscape is looking for here, Regino?
Yes.
It's got the connectivity from the sidewalk, it's got parking on the side in rear, which not in the front, all landscaped, and there's the throughway from the sidewalk area to the back of the building to get the, to get to the retail in the back. So I think it's exactly when they set up the streetscape zoning, this is what they're talking about. So I, as far as the parking goes, to me, I like the parking just the way it is myself. I think that if they had the, the joint access and had those three other spots, I think that would probably help mostly for the viability of that retail business that's on that side that we could park right there and run in, this could get the glory around the back. So I think that, that would be helpful to retail people on that particular side. Walter, comment?
Yeah, you could, I, I should prefer the, the option that comes in from the town hall side, but of those three additional parking, you could throw a couple of plantings there in front of them to keep the cars not visible from the streets too, that's not a big deal. As far as the, the islands of the two, the two islands that the DRB proposes, I'm not, I'm not stuck on that, I could go in the way of that.
At the child, we'd take the two parking spots, that was my...
Usually take one.
We're having to take one or two spots.
Usually take one, well, you take two in total.
There was one other recommendation that DRB made, and I'm not sure if it's in their letter, but on that drive-through, they just asked if we can make this more of a bubble and put a tree or something in there.
My personally, we've been having traffic flow in there with the, with the winter and the, and the falling off of the leaves, I mean, I, I would rather have that just open, it's commercial. I'd rather keep the, the landscaping around the perimeter plant, and I said mainly to buffer that, that residential customer there.
And we can concentrate on that, I just wanted to make sure that their, their message gets passed along.
Yeah, okay. Is the, the dark area there dilating the drive-through a raised curb area or is it just a painted surface?
Yeah, that guy.
That'd be raised curb.
Raised curb, okay.
Like a, a permeable pavement there.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me.
Yep, excuse me.
Questions, anybody else?
Right? Traffic, right? There's going to be a traffic.
I think that's cutting out the most.
So, fellow record, my name is Bill Scully, we're doing international affairs with the traffic and stuff on the project. And, oh, fuck, so what we did was, we did not do a full traffic access study like Gino had mentioned. What we did do, there was a conversation with the former town planner, and he wanted certain information, so that's what we really focused on. And I'll call it a traffic review, what we did was we made estimates of the amount of traffic that could go in and out of the project during the peak times, and we also looked at the bank drive-through of key area, and then the site drives in terms of their design and visibility. So that, that's what we focused on at this point in time. The board has other things to do later on, we can certainly do that. So in terms of the amount of traffic, we forecast that based on models published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers for Bank, Retail, and Residential. We, in our letter, we, the letter's dated June 12th, that summarizes that information and presents the amount of traffic. In the morning peak period, and again, we're looking at 7:00 to 9:00 in that, that timeframe, or 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. Typically, the bank's not going to be open until 9:00, maybe, maybe a little bit earlier, but it does have an ATM drive-through, so there is some traffic, you have employees coming into the site. And we're, we're projecting in the morning peak hour, you'd have 18 vehicles entering the site, none of them leaving because of employees, you'd have more than that in the afternoon, I think I'm predicting 35 trips going in, vehicles going into the site in the afternoon, most of them leaving, coming in, doing their business, and then leaving, plus you have employees leaving or residents coming back and staying.
These are per hour?
It's in the peak hour, peak hour, in the peak hour. So the peak 60 minutes? Yeah. And one thing, one thing I did, I mentioned in the letter, didn't do in the numbers, is that given the location in the center, you're close to some residents who are able to get to the site by walking or employees in the center, whether you're town hall employees walking to the bank or walking to the retail, or the residents who live here can walk to the train or walk to businesses in the center. So that you, there is the potential, and I think that was the, the goal in the, in the original town center's plan, that we would be able to start developing some things, and it's just not all vehicle, certainly a lot because we're suburban. But that, so, so there is the potential to have some reduction from the numbers that are presented in the June 12th letter. There's also a lot, a bank use, retail use draws traffic from the roadway system, so someone who is maybe heading to, heading to work, heading to some other spot is coming along the way and, and says I'll stop at the bank on the way, so it's not all new traffic to the roadway system out there. In terms of the bank drive-through... of the bank drive-through, current industry design standards suggest at least being able to accommodate three vehicles in, in the queue, which we've got about four vehicles in the window queue. And you've got about that for the ATM as well, although if, if the windows fall, then, you know, the ATM person's gonna have to wait until they can get there. But you have actually the ability to have about six vehicles before you get into the circulation in the parking field. So in, in fact, how it's designed seems to meet industry standards and, and we're able to accommodate that. At the site drives, and, and some, the final plan right now that you see before you, so there was early plans, early, you know, things that we were looking at and working with the site designers. So the biggest thing that we have is when you get down to the driveways, you want clear visibility. So in the original plan, the sidewalk and grading and wall is a little bit closer to the road, and we worked with Rick to stop moving that back. So that you come down to the site drive and stop, the wall's not blocking you, the sidewalk is there, the, the grading of grass area next to the sidewalk is flat. So you have clear visibility of the, of the roundabout, as well as clear visibility looking at this drive down Union, this drive up Liberty, or again, towards the roundabout. In terms of, it, it's kind of an odd, a little bit of an odd sight in doing traditional site disorder analysis, because, because you have, on the approach to the roundabout, you have advisory fifteen mile per hour speeds, you have posted twenty-five mile per hour speed on Union. So that in general, coming towards the roundabout or out of the roundabout, the vehicle speeds are relatively low. So that, and in, in terms of this drive to the roundabout, you're about seven feet from the roundabout, you're about a hundred and, it was a hundred and twenty feet or so from on, on Liberty. You can see through the roundabout. When this is designed and graded and built, you'll be able to see anything coming from this side. So beyond the, the, the footage that you would tend to want to have of visibility, it's just that that vehicle will be yielding and going around the route.
The car in the middle now that's from the lot?
Excuse me?
The car until that now is around surrounding that lot that's coming down the street parade?
Yes.
You'd be able to see through that?
Yes. So, so with that, we conclude that you will have clear visibility of everything going around the round there. The approach, the approach from Union to that drive is clear, the approach down Liberty to that drive is clear. If it, if it changes to the alternative, then, you know, it's really an existing drive that's, that's in place. And, and again, good visibility. If it goes to the alternative, it's a little bit further from the roundabout. So, you know, that's, that works to in advantage.
The question really is, is visibility of coming down Liberty Lane. If you're in the exit there on Union Street, you know, what?
Exit on Union?
Yeah, you're sitting there wanting to go, and someone's coming down Liberty Lane to come around or to go onto Union Street.
Yeah.
How's the visibility of that vehicle to the person?
You're gonna, you're gonna see everything in this, from the person who's sitting there exiting?
Yeah.
You're gonna see everything, everything towards the roundabout in that direction.
But going back up, up?
You're not gonna, you're not gonna see that vehicle here.
Where do you start seeing it?
You'll start seeing that vehicle, you know, off, as he crosses that yield line, you'll see that vehicle.
Right about there, okay.
Now, I am not aware of any issues at that roundabout. We've been doing studies on the other side of town, on the other side of the center. So we've been dealing with the, the circle at Rockwood and Main. So I, we haven't, not aware of any problems or issues at that location at this one. However, at the meeting early tonight, one of, I think it was the abbot who made the comment of, I think, if I understood you correctly, people tend to come down Liberty and make that right turn fast.
Really fast. I have six police reports in from that car.
Just hold on. So, I mean, there's a limit to how fast you can do that move, just because you're, you're coming down, you're yielding to whatever's going on here. But then you still have to make your right turn and, and get going again. So.
I actually think what's challenging there is as the cars are coming down Union, right? So they're up, up at the northern corner.
Up here?
You come down, as they're coming down there, there's a high wall. So if you're coming down Liberty Lane, your visual of that person entering the rotary on the north side is actually pretty tricky. So if you're sitting at Liberty Lane?
Yeah.
Yep, and the guy coming from?
They can't see up there?
It's tough, because the wall is high there at the corner. And they do come fast around that, that's where I find they come fast. It's a, it's a visibility thing at that high wall that's at the town wall. It's a tricky corner there.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I agree.
So my concern there with the additional vehicles because of this, you know, coming down Liberty Lane, that there's more potential.
I mean, that, I mean, we're, it's, it's really not a, it's not anticipated to be a large generator of traffic. There will be more, certainly. I mean, some people coming out of this drive are gonna head towards the west or up there. So they're out. Some people are gonna use this drive, especially if they're coming through the drive-through, or heading south on Union. So, I mean, that's, that's something that we can look at. There may be some things, easy things to do to, to either tighten up or improve visibility. And like I said, I, I just am not, I wasn't aware until outside here or something.
And I think coming out of the Union Street exit, perhaps some kind of curbing or island or something there that makes it very tricky to make a left turn. Have you seen that kind of mitigation before? So that you really can only do a right turn, so they can't cheat.
Is that what?
So that's a right turn only coming out of there, or is that a left?
Exactly. I don't think it was, I don't think it was restricted to a right turn zone.
All right. Let me see.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if I, I would do that. You have the drive-through. So a good portion of the people coming through the drive-through have no interest in going down Union. What you don't want is them to drive three hundred feet or like next door.
Yeah, I miss it.
What's the distance between the exit and the, the first yield line?
The exit.
From the exit, the exit only one?
Yeah.
There and to?
To the yield?
Yeah.
Um, I would, um, I don't know, I'd have to look at where we measured seventy feet.
Seven, so is that what it?
I know we measured seventy feet to the roundabout. I'd have to see if it was measuring, measuring to the lane or to the yield line. I think it was to be more the lane.
That'll be the only other tough time is during, when a train comes and the traffic backs up all the way to this rotary. And try, if you're trying to get out of there, and you're getting, trying to enter into that queue, that might be.
Yeah, so here, so something like that. I mean, it, it comes out, anything you study in the center, someone's gonna say, well, the train comes, okay, that's one of the beauties of having the train station there. So let's say, you know, if traffic is backed up because of that, I mean, people can exit out here and may go that way.
Sure.
So as people get familiar with the site and they know.
So you don't have to skirt around having to go through the rotary?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's good.
Just a quick question, Tom, on parking. Do you know that if they, the tenants have enough, are they going to reserve any spaces for apartment owners or employees where it would take away places for just public use?
We would dedicate one space for each apartment.
Okay.
Anybody else in the board question?
That's twenty-four hours a day, because some complexes won't allow that during the day of business hours, and only after hours. But that would be twenty-four hours.
Yeah, we would be looking at twenty-four hours a day, because we think one of the attractive things here is that somebody could live there and walk to the train.
Yeah.
All right, sir, you had a question?
I do.
Would you just give us your name, please?
It's Mark McGuckian, twenty Union Street, right next door. So first of all, I'm actually really glad that you asked if I was notified by anybody, which I wasn't. I found out about this development, and I came to town hall, trying to find out information, and I got nothing back. This was last year. I went to the credit union, left, I spoke to the manager over there, and asked him for some information. I got nothing. The guy sent in a surveyor onto my property without my permission. I don't know whether that's a law on it, but, you know, he could have been notified about it. I think the guy could have done a better job, because when he was doing the survey, and he didn't realize that I have a well that is ten feet away from the property line, on that line. So I don't know what the restrictions are for the retaining wall. Now, as for the traffic, I don't know where you're getting your stats from, but like, you don't live on this corner, okay? This corner is gonna create a debt, and I'm telling you right now.
Speak to the chair, okay, sir?
Sorry?
Speak to me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, to put in, it's bad enough right now. People don't use the yield signs. They're never gonna use the yield signs, okay? They come around, it says twenty-five, it says fifteen, but like, they don't do it. I have videos, I have six police reports gone in. I don't know whether they were filed, but I was over to the police station six times, because I'm afraid to walk from my property to the town green on a Thursday night to watch the concerts. I'm afraid, in case my kids are gonna get killed. If you add in thirty-three parking lots there, and have an exit coming out, so if my property is here, they want to put the exit here, a double exit, that's crazy, because you're adding onto this traffic coming onto the rotary. I won't be able to get off, I won't be able to take a left.
You'd have a single exit, yours?
But no, but I have, I have the right to have a, a double exit, or to go left or right.
No, there's gonna be just an, an, an exit only.
But you can go left or right.
But you can go left or right, of course, yeah.
It'll go on, in the new, in the lot night. But if you can go left, you're going onto the rotary. And then you have cars coming right. I could be coming out of my lot, I could have crashed there. But the worst thing is, if you have a left-hand exit coming onto that rotary, cars coming around by Liberty Lane, cars coming down, they're not gonna see you. It's as simple as that. I'm gonna, like, honestly, it's a dead trap.
How do you feel about the grade from your driveway all the way to the rotary, that now is perhaps ten feet high?
Yeah.
How do you feel about that coming down and clearing out the whole sight line from your driveway?
It's not gonna stop people from speeding, I'm just being honest.
You think it's a help?
No. It'll help people visually maybe, but it's not gonna help people slow down.
Well, that is gonna help people slow down.
No, and then, so my other point is, with the rotary being so small, what's the construction like gonna be of this? With big trucks coming into town, deliveries, drop-offs, everything, it's gonna be a mess. As of right now, they're not meant to be going down, down Union Street. But if you have traffic coming in there in the mornings, you have the trains, the, the school buses, everything, you know? And it's all on a blind corner. And I'm sick of it, because I'm sick of going to the police, and I feel like a bad, a, a, a bad, um, a bad tenant or whatever in town. But I pay my taxes, and I think this should be definitely looked at, that this is gonna cause a debt.
That's why this man is here, the traffic consultant.
Yeah, so that was another point. He said he kind of done a survey. He didn't do a survey. He obviously didn't do a survey, because if he wants to do a survey, stand outside my property for about three hours in the morning, and that's your survey.
You're talking about a traffic count?
Sorry?
You're talking about doing an actual traffic count?
Yeah.
By, by survey?
No, you'll see the way the traffic is.
Right, the count.
People coming and, coming and going and.
Right, he got some, you got, what was your information for your, your peak traffic?
Well, that was from those models to predict how much new traffic would be going in and out of the project site. So when we talked to the planner, he didn't, he didn't, you know, where, he said, here's the basic information I need for that.
So we cut commerce.
So we didn't go out and do new traffic counts at that location.
Okay.
Why is that, I'm just saying.
Is that something that would be normally included in a full traffic?
Normally at this, at this size, with the traffic generated so low, correct me if I'm wrong, Gino, we don't, we don't have a full-blown traffic study when you have something of this, this small amount of traffic. I think in residential, you have to have like more than, although this is not, I think in residential, you need more than, what, seventy-five homes or so that even require a traffic study?
I don't remember exactly, but it is something like that.
It's pretty, it's pretty extensive to actually count. What they do is they're taking studies that are in existence right now from the center of town, and they're duplicating it with the studies that were done for the project over on Rockwood Road, that forty B project, for that rotary. I think they're all using similar data. Is that correct?
Uh, we're using, we're building off of data that was actually collected during Boyd's Crossing.
I don't know if it'll serve a purpose to have somebody go out and count and.
Get speeds of people coming around.
I have videos.
Yeah, yeah. Your opinion, Mike, I can ask too, you're here, why not?
I agree that in small traffic generators like this, it would not typically be required. However, if there is a, an assertion of an issue with the traffic patterns, regardless of what the models might indicate, that it would be in the board's interest to require some additional investigation, perhaps not a full-blown traffic study, but a couple of speeds, speed loops to see what is the speed of the traffic that's coming through that intersection, particularly heading south on Union.
Is that somewhere across between a full study and what has been done?
I would defer to Mr. Scully, but I don't know, again, that you need a full-blown traffic study the entire corridor, but.
This just checks the speed?
Something along those lines to verify that the assertion of the abbot, that there are, there's a hazardous condition currently existing at the location that could be.
Peak hours or any hour?
All day. We'd be able to, as long as Tom is willing to do it, we can put a tuba on, on Union Street.
And just do, do you account for twenty-four hours or something?
Yeah, we could leave it for twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
I see. Any?
Like that, it gives us a snapshot of peak hours, peak hours, what the volume is, what the speeds are.
Is that acceptable to you, Tom?
That's fine.
So you do that on Union Street, right by where this egress is going to be?
Right around the site drive, yeah.
Right. And leave it there for a full day?
Yeah, we'd probably leave it there for two days, two full days.
Couple of days? Probably the busier days, which is.
We usually, uh, we try to usually count like Wednesday, Thursdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That gives you a, a typical weekday condition, so.
Would you consider the northerly site we were talking about too?
The north, in, in between the two roundabouts? Is that what, or, or did you say this?
Yeah, no, the one I, no, the on Union, the north side.
I mean, we could, yeah. I mean, I don't know what that gives us.
It, it does no, there's no correlation, because you don't know necessarily where the traffic goes after that point.
And certainly, it's, it's higher volume, it's higher volume than Union Street, the southern part. It's probably slower traffic, because everyone's slowing down in both directions as you approach the circles. So I'm not sure that.
They don't slow down going onto their rotary, I'm telling you right now. People do not slow down going onto their rotary.
You have to raise your hand to be recognized.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, I would, I would say that my observations are, I mean, you can't drive through those circles really fast. Cert, some people probably slow down more than others. What we could, I could talk to the chief just to see, is there any particular issue that the police department has seen at this circle that, you know, might, might be able to be easily addressed as part of, if we're redoing a sidewalk and everything around the corner, we might be able to tighten up some things to make, make, what we try to do, and, and these were one of the first ones in state, but, so what we try to do is, is really slow traffic down as they come to the circle, and really have to make them, you know, make a careful right turn. So these being some of the first ones, you know, maybe the islands leading into the circle aren't sharp enough. You know, there might be some tweaking that can be done to.
Why don't you, why don't you do that count out there for that two-day period, as you mentioned, and do some homework on the, the history on that roundabout?
Okay.
For our next meeting, is everybody sort of in line with that? And give us sort of a, a snapshot early at our next meeting, and we can satisfy the, the abbot here hopefully, and get some actual data.
It's gonna be tough to satisfy me in anything at that corner.
All right, okay, well said. All right, so see if we can satisfy the board into doing everything we did as far as our homework was, to make sure this is gonna create a more unsafe situation. So we'll take it from there. All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Can I go back on about the well? I'm sorry, I've got a lot of questions. I, I just, it's, it's the, the fact that nobody came to me is why I'm so upset about everything. Not one notification, you know what I mean? And it's, it's ridiculous.
You're notified as an abbot though, when the filing was done, correct?
I should have got a registered letter in the mail.
Right, did you?
No.
Keep a copy of that.
We don't put registered letters.
Well, I, I'm sorry, but.
Notice?
Notice of hearing, yes.
All right, so anyways, you questioned the well.
I had, I had a registered letter from the, the.
State plane doesn't require registered letters, I guess that's.
Well, they had, I got one for somebody digging a septic. So why wouldn't I get one for this big?
Because they don't require one in this type of filing.
Okay, so.
So, well, your question on the well was.
The well. Um, they're asking for five extra feet.
They're asking for what?
For five extra feet for parking or something like that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, I got a well ten feet from the fence, the line. And what's the restriction from there? 'Cause if they flatten that.
There is none.
John, I have a copy of the site line here.
Any restriction for, is that a, a drinking well?
No.
No, but I'm afraid if they, if they lower the lot, it's gonna cause a sinkhole. Or it's gonna disrupt all my property and all my roots and all, everything, and everything's gonna come down.
I don't think there's any restrictions, as far as I know, someone putting a, a wall, a retaining wall, or doing excavation on their own property.
But what if they flatten it? It's gonna disrupt all of the, the ground, the ground.
You're, you're saying something you're not sure of, so we're not sure what's gonna happen.
But I'm nervous about it, that's why I'm saying it.
Well, if something happens, then that, I think that, then it's brought up right then.
So if something happens, you're gonna wait for something to happen? Is, is, are you gonna wait for something to happen?
What I'm telling you is, we can't restrict a retaining wall by a person going on his own property with the anticipation because there may be a sinkhole next door. Can't do that. They have rights.
So do I, but.
I understand. And the rights on this particular thing are no, you can't stop them from doing excavation on their own property.
Even if it causes movement and anything like that on the next-door neighbor?
You don't know that, they can't be on your property, that's all.
So I've got a tree line, another, like another thing, we're talking about the fence and stuff like that. Um, as, as soon as that's flattened, they're probably all gonna go as well, all the roots and everything like, you know? Plus, I'm gonna have, the sight I'm gonna see of this property, it's an invasion of privacy to me because I've been living in this house without having this here, and now all of a sudden I'm gonna have apartments looking at my, at me and my children playing in my backyard. Then it's gonna be visual.
It's, it's all commercial, which means that you have a right to build.
Okay.
Our job here is to give them their rights to do what they can and try to mitigate the issue with, with your property. Which if you listen to us, we've been working at that from day one. So basically, we can't stop someone from using their rights to develop property, but we again try to, to mitigate the damaged entity budding properties, and that's our job. And that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
And that's, we've started this whole meeting off doing that. Concern for yours is regarding to the rest of the property.
Thank you.
So as we go along, hopefully you'll be, uh, maybe not pleased, but.
And I didn't even have a drink tonight.
That's good. Hopefully you'll find it not as bad as, as the unknown.
Hopefully, and I think.
We're gonna work with you and these folks at the same time and see if we can at least mitigate some of the issues you may think you have, okay?
Okay.
We've made a promise for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, any other questions from the audience? All right, that being the case, that, uh, why do we continue this for our next meeting is when we can get the stormwater done? We can get the traffic information updated? We can, uh, put a list, have they applied for all the special permits to report? Is all the paperwork in, all right, we can, we can sort of consolidate the special permits that they're gonna need. I'd like to consolidate the waivers they're looking for. I'd like to have Mike's input on the waiver request, or your, Gino, and see if we can sort of come to terms with what special permits we think are acceptable and which waivers and which are not. And I think when we, uh, go forward in this, we'll probably have a, a recommendation with both egresses, the alternative plan and the, uh, other one where somebody is definitely against one of them, then that would be a different issue. But if we find that either one is acceptable, but we do have a preference, we can also put that in our finding too. And if our preference is for the, uh, the joint entrance, then of course that would be contingent on a town meeting, uh, vote at the next town meeting. So, that being said, our next meeting is August.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, we can put these folks on the agenda at work time.
Seven work weekends.
So we have a motion to extend this public hearing until August twenty-third at seven P.M.
So moved.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Just like to thank the board for the, um, hearing tonight.
Tom, are any of these units affordable? How about that at all?
Five minutes break, so. We're actually back from break. We're gonna have open our next public hearing with, uh, a clerk reading the, uh, the notes.
In accordance with the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws and Planning Board rules and regulations in MGL Chapter Forty-A, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven forty-five P.M. in Route GO-Seven in the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, on the application of Norway Realty Trust for approval of a special permit for an open space preservation subdivision plan entitled Norway Farms. Planned by United Consultants Incorporated, rent the mass dated June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, located at thirty-three Midway Street. The subdivision is proposed to have fourteen lots, C.S.S.R.'s map sixteen, block thirty-four, Lot One Sixty-two in the R-three zoning district. The property is owned by Norway Realty Trust, thirty-three Midway Street, Norfolk, Mass.
Okay, for the record, I'm having a queue.
I'm serious, you're on.
Good evening, Rick Goodwell with United Consultants, uh, here this evening on behalf of Rob and Gene Kane, owners of the property at, uh, entitled Norway Farms, Open Space Development. As the board is aware, we were before the board, uh, over the past few months for a conventional subdivision, uh, at this property. We did have some meetings and discussions with the board, chose to withdraw that application and come forward after some discussions, uh, with the board with an open space preservation development plan. So, as the board is aware, the property is located on the south side of Midway Street, east of Crestbrook Road, which is a cul-de-sac and to the, uh, excuse me, to the west, to the east, west. Uh, and to the east of Lake Street. Been a long, I apologize. Betsy, if you wouldn't mind going to, uh, page two. So what our proposal consists of is a cul-de-sac road to service fourteen lots. The lots range in size from approximately twenty thousand square feet to slightly more than twenty-three or so thousand square feet, with the exception of the, uh, existing house and the existing barn. So the existing house, um, is required to meet the undermining zoning of the area, which is in our thirty zone, thirty thousand square feet, hundred fifty feet of frontage width circle, et cetera. And that lot, lot does comply with that. Uh, the existing barn will be converted into a residence. So we have provided some additional area around that just because of the location of that. We have tried to maximize the, uh, open space of the project, which is an open space area two here and an open spaced area one here, which, uh, Betsy, if you could go to the next sheet, please? This depicts the overall development. Uh, we have done this at a sixty scale so that everything would fit on one plan, so that everyone, uh, would be able to see it in the open space lot one, uh, would be on one sheet as well as open space lot two, and then the overall development. So as I said earlier, the road's proposed to be serviced by a cul-de-sac. We have provided the ability for roadway easement to connect into the Crestbrook Road roadway easement. We would, uh, be proposing for pedestrian access to be constructed through that, as well as a water main to be connected, so that there would be a looping of the water main system. And we have proposed a twenty-foot wide emergency access, uh, roadway to be constructed into that area as well. Let's see if you could go to the next sheet. So this is a grading plan, and basically what we'll be looking at doing is, um, having a twenty-four-foot wide paved roadway within a sixty-foot layout. We'd be proposing to have one sidewalk that would come up to this area, connect up to Crestbrook. We'd be proposing to construct sidewalks from Crestbrook down, uh, as far down Midway Street as we could possibly go. The applicant does control easements on these two properties here. He does not control an easement on the corner lot of Lake Street, but the sidewalk would extend down, as I said, as far down to the thirty-seven, um, Midway Street property as possible. Additionally, we've provided for pedestrian access through this area here, as well as a pedestrian, uh, trail to make a connection up to the Canterbury Road subdivision. Uh, all things we had talked about previously. And if you could go to the last slide. We've provided a roadway profile. Um, we do have some cuts at the entrance. As you can see, we're coming off the existing roadway, trying to come in, match into the topography there. We have summarized, uh, some of these things, um, to just give the board an idea. Previously, we had about eighty-seven hundred yards of material proposed for removal for roadway, um, the roadway, Crestbrook Road roadway extension, which would travel through from the cul-de-sac into the site, with an additional thirty-eight hundred yards coming in off the small cul-de-sac road that was proposed. We're now looking at about forty-five hundred yards of material or a reduction of about eight thousand cubic yards of material under this proposal for, uh, removal from the site. We also had approximately thirteen point six acres of the site was either wooded or wetlands, if you could go back to the middle slide, please, Betsy? So we have a wetland system here and a wooded area here, and actually, if you go to the fourth slide. This one here, I'm sorry. This one. That one. The only one I didn't point to. Um, as you can see, we've demarcated the existing tree line. We were looking at trying to focus the development into the previously disturbed area, which was a tree farm, um, operated by the Canes. So we are proposing for some minimal tree clearing here on this lot, some tree clearing here on this lot, and additionally, some tree clearing here for that septic system. But mainly, the other portions of the lot are contained within the previously disturbed gravel areas with minimal, minimal tree cutting being proposed. There's actually a reduction, uh, in the tree cutting from the conventional subdivision to the open space from about two point two-six acres to about one point four-five. So about eight tenths of an acre of wooded area will be retained with the open space preservation and cul-de-sac proposal. Additionally, we've run the calculations which are on the cover sheet. And basically, the, um, rules and regulations require that we calculate the reduction of the lot areas that we're proposing. And that is then put into a formula that dictates what the required open space would be. And we've run through that calculation. And that number is less than twenty-five percent of the site. So there's another provision in the bylaws that requires a minimum of twenty-five percent of the site be retained as open space. And we're actually proposing about two, well, we're actually proposing to be about two hundred percent of what's required for that twenty-five percent open space. So we're actually proposing about fifty-three percent of the site as open space, which contains some of the steep slopes and the wetland systems that are around the perimeter, which we had looked at earlier with the tree line and the wetland system shown. So we feel it's a good proposal to take advantage of the existing cleared areas and try and maintain the sensitive areas of the site, the existing wooded areas that are adjacent to the abutting properties. The wetland areas, obviously, are very sensitive. And then some steep slopes that exist up in this area here. Uh, we have provided a four-step plan to the board, which Betsy has. We can quickly go through that if you'd like. Let's actually step forward, please.
What's that? Is that the existing open space?
No, that's, that's the fourth step, actually. So step one. So step one is to identify the sensitive areas, which would be the green areas, which would be the tree line, the steep slopes located here, and then the blue would be the wetland areas that are located on the site. Step two is to situate the houses in and around the site, taking advantage of the, uh, southern exposure. So we had done that, situated the houses around the site. Third step is to put the roadway system in. So we had showed the roadway system for the cul-de-sac, the future extension, as to how the development could take place. And, you know, you can start to see how a majority of the houses are focused in the previously, um, previous nursery area, minimal clearing being done on these three lots, and then for the septic system on that lot and some grading. And then lastly, we've positioned the lot lines around the houses to provide for, uh, building lots. So what we've, what we've looked at is having the ability to meet the setback requirements from the open space, uh, from a house, which is a thirty-foot requirement from the lot line of the open space to a house. Houses need to be situated a minimum of fifty feet between each of the structures, and the houses also need to be fifteen feet off a lot line. So when you're looking at these houses, you know, I know we talked about reduction of frontages and things, and we've actually increased the open space area, reduced some of the lots. But when we also talked about this, we looked at the reduction of frontages. And we actually have reduced some of the frontages as suggested by the board. And there is a formula requirement that all of the frontages of the lots average out to a hundred feet. So there's a, the, the ability to reduce one to fifty feet, but then in essence, you need a hundred and fifty feet on one lot to offset that, or some combination thereof. We do have a considerable amount of frontage here, and a considerable amount of frontage here. Again, on page one of the, of the subdivision plans, there is the formula as to what we add for frontage. And we don't necessarily exceed it by very much, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I think it was about.
Hundred and fourteen.
What's that?
One fourteen change.
Hundred and fourteen. Additional linear footage of roadway, uh, uh, excuse me, of frontage, which again, when you look at that first lot end, if you could go to the next one up, Betsy? Please? You know, this lot has two hundred and forty-five feet of frontage, but in reality, a good portion of it is that stuff there, which is taking up that fourteen feet. So we are taking advantage of that, we are taking advantage of this. You know, we have some fifty-foot frontage lots, we have tried to get a combination, take advantage on the outside of the curve, if you will, with a spoke effect for the, for the lot layouts. We also had put together some packets that I'd like to hand out. I know we had gone through some of these at the previous hearings, but again, since this is a new hearing, if I may, this is a summary of the documents included.
Thank you, sir.
Um, some were prepared by the Canes. And there's, outline some advantages to the open space development. That's enough for everybody. So there's an open space preservation compliance review, a community development plan, and a master plan narrative that basically speak to how the project, uh, would be more advantageous. Betsy, if you could, there's actually one of the aerial photos.
Yep.
Three aerial photos are provided, gives you an idea of the, of the site area. There you can see, the outline of the site, the wooded areas, the wetland systems, proposed amenities of the trail and the connection from Crestbrook into the proposed cul-de-sac, as well as, you know, a rough idea of where a trail system could be, coming from the cul-de-sac up into the Canterbury development, as well as better idea of where that sidewalk system would be, um, along Midway Street. Um, there's also some letters from the abutters, um, with respect to a cul-de-sac, um, proposal, which we have in front of the board this evening. And we've, we've discussed that previously, and I'm anticipating we'll discuss that further detail later from the board as their comment, provided you with some types of houses that the applicant would be proposing. We've also provided you with a letter from the landscape architect that had worked on this project previously, uh, approximately ten years ago, and a tax rate comparison prepared by the applicant. So as I said, these documents were provided to the board previously, we know it's a new board, new hearing. We just wanted to take advantage of summarizing that and providing the, the documents to you. Um, I do have some smaller copies of the plan, some of the board members would prefer that, I see most people have them, so.
Well, you don't take long.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a lot on.
Thank you, sir. Can you be kayaking, kayaking in that one?
Am I?
No, you, I mean, just, generally speaking.
I don't know if they kayak in there now. Rob could probably speak better to that. I have seen some, some boat activity on the shore of boats being stored that looked like they would go out there.
No, I just, I just briefly scanned the, the letter signed by all the neighbors, the abutters. Any of you folks want to join as an assistant associate member of the planning board, we have an opening or two. We have a lot of pertinent things in here. That's pretty good.
Wait, what?
Huh?
I said wait a second.
Anyways, how does the drainage work?
Let's go back to subdivision sheet four. These are batches, about five of these actually.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forget, I forget. Yeah, there we go.
So what we were looking at doing, and Beta's going to comment on it, is we had some watershed traveling onto the site. We were looking at capturing the bioretention area here. Previously, we had had one here, but as we tightened up the development, we lost the area for that and relocated it here. Secondly, we are proposing a bioretention area with a settlement four bay preceding it here. What we'd be looking to do is have the roadway drainage come down. We're looking at proposing some discharge areas into a swale that would run along the roadway system and be directed to the four bay area and then discharge into the, into the bioretention area. We haven't, we haven't completed, completed a full stormwater analysis at this stage. This is more like a preliminary discussionary plan for purposes of...
But for, for purposes of the water being discharged to the bioretention areas, the rest of it will have a monolithic berm roadway?
Yes, there'll be a monolithic berm posed on the, this side of the roadway, which is decide where the sidewalk would be. And then there'll be berms in the majority of the areas, except for where you see these little...
Okay.
Discharge points. We have small openings of five feet or so.
Okay.
But it would then have the berm. And we would be, Rob, we were talking about vertical drainage curb at the entrance roundings?
Yes, whatever the board would like.
Well, I tell you, it's a, it's a big improvement over a couple of the other past ones, but it's, it's very impressive that you've worked in all the open space area and took down a minimal amount of the forestry there. And natural drainage, the open space is pretty much contiguous now right around to the pond on both sides, and I understand the frontage you did probably the best you could with that excess frontage on those first two lots. So I think overall, it's, it's highly improved, actually.
Thank you.
Any comments before I ask Mike, our engineer, to go over the comments of the stormwater? Walter?
I would, I would echo your, your comments about the improvement in the layout, and provides more, more open space for the town residents to, to use and to access. So yes, I'm supportive of it.
Well, anytime you can build a fourteen-lot subdivision? A fourteen-lot subdivision and only remove forty-five hundred cubic yards of gravel and only take down that minimal amount of trees.
True, you're doing something.
You're doing something right, yeah.
Can you just point out the pedestrian access again?
For...
Like the walking areas and everything like that that you guys had laid out?
There'll be one up here.
Right, that's the...
You're going to the twenty-foot easement, uh, the twenty-foot emergency access. And then there would be one in here, providing connectivity to the Canterbury subdivision here.
Okay.
And then Crestbrook Road currently has sidewalks that come up both sides and around the cul-de-sac loop. So we're now going to have our connective point here, down our roadway system here, and then we'd be installing a sidewalk all the way up Midway Street to Crestbrook and then connect to that. And then we would pick up from the southern, oh, the, the westerly side of our roadway on the southern side of Midway and head down Midway as far as we could towards Lake Street.
Is there access to the open space from Midway Street?
Well, you have, this is open space here. There is, but there's some, some grading there, you know?
Well, is this the... Is it intended to put a trail? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is it intended to put a trail along there?
Uh, no, we were proposing to keep that vegetated, but, you know, somebody could certainly come up the sidewalk and then make the, the cross in that area there.
Okay, but, well, yeah, you'd, suppose they did come up the sidewalk, cross the street, is that accessible? Is that going to be a trail to get into the open space?
Um, we were not proposing a trail at that location, no. I mean, we could put some signage. You know, you can walk, you can walk between the trees. It's not so heavily wooded.
The grades are pretty tough.
Yeah, the grades are pretty tough. Speaking of grades, speaking of grades being pretty tough, the access to, oh, gosh, what's that? Crestbrook? Oh, Canterbury.
Canterbury. Isn't that trail that you proposed missing that access to Canterbury?
Well, we've connected to where Canterbury has a subway system.
I thought, I'm looking just above where you pointed, isn't that where the access is, the connection?
Well, Canterbury Road is out here.
Yeah, I understand, but...
This is just a gravel area.
Is that really seen?
No, we're, we're missing each other.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There, there looks to be a, a long, narrow rectangular space running from Canterbury. This guy, yeah. What is that?
That's a drainage easement.
That's not the, that's not the walking connection, huh?
Nope. This is, this is a fifty-six foot wide...
Okay, I understand.
Area.
Fair enough, yeah.
That's been gravelled and prepped.
Who owns the drainage easement, the town?
As far as I know, just roadway system and drainage easements have not been accepted by the town as of yet.
It's just the drainage easement there for no reason, huh?
It was an underground system.
Oh, there is.
There's, there's, I believe it's four-by-four galleys that run down the lot line.
From Canterbury.
For Canterbury, correct. And there's, there's other ones further down in different locations.
Okay.
But I believe, I believe they're four-by-four galleys.
Okay.
Yeah, the only additional comment I would offer is that while I'm in, in support of this open space plan, I think I may be the minority on the board that still would like to see a connecting road.
You're referring to Crestbrook, the cul-de-sac that's up there, to not make that emergency only?
Yes, I understand. I understand the neighbors have worked it out and with the owners and whatnot, but my view is that it's less than optimal. So I would prefer a connecting road, but I may be in the minority.
So just on that point, talking about the connection there that's labeled as emergency only, in Chief Bushnell's comments, he identified that he wouldn't use that. Am I correct in the way that I perceive those comments?
That's the way I read it, too.
So then what emergency services would be using that emergency access then?
Yeah, I read that letter, and I don't know how we could make that statement. I mean, if the roadway in Crestbrook is blocked and you can't get through, yeah, would you not use it? I, I found that a little bit interesting. Well, we have two cul-de-sacs. We normally have that regardless. We're not sure who's going to use it at this time, but you were in, you were in previous hearings, right, Kevin?
No, I wasn't.
All right. Our zoning regulations call for connectivity when you have pieces of land abutting each other, and it's normally for traffic flow-through and a connectivity of neighborhoods to neighborhoods et cetera. Are, some of us feel that the connectivity of this thirteen, fourteen-lot subdivision to a five-lot subdivision really doesn't provide, provide traffic connectivity to respect that someone's going to drive in there and then when they're leaving, going to go out the other way rather than this way. And where there's a pedestrian connectivity from the other place to this neighborhood, we're providing a pedestrian activity. And the neighbors have been pretty, pretty vocal in a very respectful way that they treasure their cul-de-sac the way it is. They don't want disturbance. There is an issue with a child there that has some disability problems on one of them, and so we've been going along this. I think Walter is pretty firm in his way. I don't think the connectivity really makes a difference myself in this particular plan as far as, in my theory, and Jim, you can chime in, when we have a neighborhood of Pheasant Hill and whatever, you've got these twenty, thirty, fifty house neighborhoods, it's nice to have them all connect through traffic-wise as well as pedestrian. Here, we think a traffic connectivity really isn't as important. On Frederickson, we did not have a connectivity because we thought it was just more of a, a safety issue, because Frederickson was seventeen feet wide. The new subdivision was twenty-four feet wide. Frederickson is curbed and what's, we thought that that really didn't serve a purpose. All that connectivity might have been more worthwhile, so we decided against it on that regard, too. So where we stand at this, if Walter stays his ground, this is an open space permit. So just how it goes that the open space permit requires a supermajority, and since we have one member that is abstained, that means that we require all four votes or this open space permit is denied. So your vote is more consequential because we have one, one member that's abstained. So that being said, Rick, when they first came with the conventional plan, just to give you the full history, and to Greg, you were hearing. The full history, when they first came, they did not have an open space plan, and they were doing more substantial cutting and grading and removing fill in the abutting woodland. So as a consequence for not connecting, we required, well, asked them to do an open space plan, to cut way down on what they're taking out, to minimize the tree clearing to save the forestry, and to give the town a lot more open space, so the town's getting something for their money there. So we're weighing that against the option of, does this connectivity for traffic that is in our regulations, that, does that really matter that much to over offset the other benefits for the town? So that's where we stand right now.
Gosh, and Walter, did you have any other drivers or your preferences to have these streets connected outside of connectivity as a whole?
Well, it's, it's the connectivity issue, and the other one is, is the public safety issue, just being able to get public safety vehicles, you know, out of both areas more easily if something is blocked or whatever. So those are the two issues, really.
Yes, Jim? Can I ask, what, the twenty-foot emergency access, what are you proposing for construction of that?
Um, we would make it whatever material would be the preference of the board in the emergency departments.
In the past, in the past for Egress Road, what we've required is compacted gravel base with a few inches of topsoil, Rick, and, and seeded.
Okay.
Rick, so trucks could travel there, but still it, it looked nice.
Foot rig's natural.
Right, exactly.
Cool.
So really, before we, again, I, did we vote, did we vote on which way to the direction to these advocates before, or no? I don't remember.
I don't know, I don't know if we voted. We certainly heard their, their appeal. We heard their approach.
No, because they ended up withdrawing.
Right, but before that, did we, did we, did you guys any direction?
I don't think so.
No?
Yeah, I mean, I thought we had some direction in, in that. You were looking to maximize the open space. You were looking to maximize the retaining of the existing vegetation and...
Yes.
Things of that nature that we kind of have on.
So if we know, if we connect, this plan has to change.
Right.
And then we've got what we were doing before with the conventional plan.
Not necessarily. What does it have to change?
Because the lots configuration is going to change.
Not much. You look up, you could, you could, you've got two lots up there that would, that would change, three lots maybe.
What's the grading change if that's connected?
Um, this section of the roadway where...
Where you connect.
If you could, if you could go back to this drawing, Betsy, please, the top one.
Which one, Rick?
As you can see, this is the existing center line. This is the proposed center line. So we're basically marrying in with a very minimal cut where the cul-de-sac area would be. And then if you go back to that middle one, or that one, yes, I'm sorry. What's happening is just past the end of the cul-de-sac, you're getting into a very steep slope here, so...
Remember, we talked about...
You can see, you can see the grade, the grade lines there.
Correct. I mean, this is, this is where it gets steep. So we've been able to take advantage of keeping this in the flat area where the existing topography is relatively flat and the cuts and fills are minimal. Having to get back up to here and look at, you know, that six percent roadway system that we have is going to push those, you know, fill areas and, well, we're going to have some cut through here and then some fill areas backing through here.
And they won't allow those frontages?
Yeah, I understand.
The frontages go through a hundred and fifty feet from the height.
Well, let's say, I think the, the advantages of the town of having an open space plan are pretty strong, and if you're telling me that that open space plan can, or no open space plan can be submitted with a connecting road, then I'll back off. But if you're telling me that we can create an open space plan and still have the connectivity, I, I would like to see that happen. But that's just me, again.
Could I make a comment? My, my name's Robert Kane. I'm one to be applicant along with my wife. And one of the things with this particular parcel is it being, and I have it in the paperwork that we submitted, is one of the headwaters for the whole watershed for the Charles River, eventually the Charles River Basin. And the more roadway you put in, the more reduction in surface recharge you're going to get, and the more roadway, we're going to have to make our bioretention areas bigger, which are also going to create more maintenance down the road for the town. So by, you know, keeping the road, we, I think between this plan and the plan that we had before, we took, what was it, Rick, another seventy feet of roadway away by trying to pull everything down into the field?
About seventy-five feet, yeah.
So, you know, by...
Between the two cul-de-sacs?
No. Uh, well, yes, well, from Midway Street to the end of ours, compared to where we looked at it, where we left off before, that road's now even shorter. It's seventy feet shorter by working with the frontages and stuff. But sort of put more hot top down to connect those two roads, it just is sort of counter to the whole idea of the value of that parcel, which is the water recharge.
In this plan, you know, provides for, be it through an easement, but a connectivity of the open space that would, you know, be bisected by a roadway system being constructed through there as well. And again, as Robert said, you're certainly going to increase cuts and fills, and you're going to increase the impervious, you know?
I think that an open space is possible, but you would just have different dynamics. And it's obvious, because you've got, you've got different sized lots, different frontages, and you're going into the back parts of some of those with the grading issues become, become pertinent. But I think either way, I think I would like to take a vote right now so that we don't have the applicant going back and forth and re-engineering where it's, I'm not fearing him at all. He's given us three or four different...
Yeah, I understand.
Designs, perhaps four or five. So I think that, you have thoughts, Kevin?
What, so our two options right now are either to go with a plan that has an emergency access connectivity or a plan that has complete roadway connectivity?
A conventional plan, right.
Having two cul-de-sacs not connected whatsoever is not an option at this point.
Oh, yeah, it is. That's what's on the table.
Well, not connected with a normal road system. I mean, it's connected with an emergency connectivity, which...
We have two cul-de-sacs, we have a freeway line.
Basically, like a wide grass path instead of an actual road.
So you're suggesting two cul-de-sacs and eliminate the emergency road?
That's the, I'm not mistaken. Is that a third option or no?
Well, it really becomes a little bit irrelevant because whether the chief used that or the police or the highway department, really, you know, if they could definitely say we would never need that, fine, we just did it in Frederickson. We did it for a reason. So will we have the potential to put an emergency egress in anyway, you say, why not?
There is water going through and there is a pedestrian sidewalk going through that area in the plan here that's proposed.
The easement will be grassed, so it's not going to look like a, a connecting road, but it will be usable if somebody wanted to use it.
Yeah, we wouldn't be proposing a pave through there. Greg, the emergency access.
You have thoughts?
I think taking into consideration the earlier meetings before this, you know, what could they, the letters from the abutters, especially with all the concerns that they had, the, the tenants on Crestbrook... had, the tenants on Crestbrook, I think this is sort of an everybody wins type of situation. They get to retain their cul-de-sac. The develop, the owners get to develop their land, and the town gets an open space plan. I don't see that, I don't really see the downside. I understand the public safety aspect of it, but in my opinion, the easement is access and it's better than nothing.
Well, as we've stated at the table many times before, these plans represent compromises and nobody gets everything that they want, so I understand.
Yeah.
Motion to have this roadway system on this subdivision not connect. The plan is, is up there. I need a motion.
Sub move.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. So it doesn't connect.
So...
So we continue on with this plan?
We, this is a special permit hearing, so are we very close?
I think we can close the special permit hearing, yes. Motion to close the special permit hearing for the open space plan for roadway five.
John, you got to hear from the crowd here.
Anybody have any comments on the open space permit? This is just... Okay, I didn't think so.
I thought there was some.
Yeah. I think there'll be more comments when we get into the subdivision.
Yeah.
So did, did we vote?
No, we didn't.
All, the motions on the table, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it passes.
You look like you're staring at someone.
So the open space, the open space, the open space plan permit, special permit is approved. So now what are we going to, you're a stormwater, Mike, and...
I'm going to be a little wrinkled.
Go through your comment.
Understand when I get to it. So you have an opportunity to review the concept of open space plans. We unfortunately only return the comments to Rick and to the town today. So I'll read through the comments and our recommendations. General comments, the three of them, most of them are on the administrative side of things and housekeeping. The first item is open space ownership. There isn't information on the plan regarding the ultimate ownership that is intended for the open space area, or it would be the town's morpho for some other entity. So the applicant should identify the intended ownership of the permanent open space as part of the conceptual plan so that the board understands what the intent is and who ultimately be responsible for that open space area.
You decided that, Rob, who was going to control the open space, you're going to have it turned over to the town or are you going to have a homeowners association?
I had always been inclined to have a homeowners association. But, well, you know, again, willing to talk about that as we proceed.
Well, you've got the different options, but you're just going to have to let us know sooner than later.
Yes. Because there are some administrative things that go along with different ownership and agreements that need to be executed.
Okay. We'll look into that between now and the next meeting.
Formal documents, et cetera, okay.
Comment number two is related to the calculations. As Rick mentioned, he did a number of calculations to determine the dimensional requirements and conformance with them. One thing that I think should be on the sheet is reference to the original subdivision plan, conventional subdivision plan serving as the yield plan from which the lot count for the open space plan is derived. That calculation should be presented, say, on the cover sheet. In point of fact, proposal's calling for fourteen units, which would be allowed under the yield plan plus ten percent, which is the standard for open space preservation development. The original conventional subdivision depicted thirteen units. Thirteen plus an additional one point three would be fourteen, which is what the applicant is proposing.
Sure, let the formalize the plans and every sheet.
Minor thing, the sheet naming on the sheets.
We can first go past that one and take care of that. Sorry about that. Copy, copy, copy.
The next comments are by sheet. For sheet number one, the cover sheet, there are a number of waivers requested on the cover sheet, and we've evaluated each of them. So I'll just go through them one by one. Section three point three point two, point twenty-three, point two, traffic impact analysis. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the requirement for on traffic impact analysis based on the nature of the development, which is a residential development, the number of units. We don't think that it's warranted for this. Section four point one four point six, right of way widths and alignments, reduced roadway width. The applicant is looking for a twenty-four foot road. It appears the roadway has been classified as a secondary road, which would normally require twenty-six feet. Again, in light of the nature of the development...
Yeah, we never said anybody go twenty-six foot road.
Yeah, it's, it's wider than is necessary for a road like this. So we concur, we think the waiver request is reasonable. Let's drop them, this is the front one. Section four point fourteen point nine point one, cul-de-sacs, increased length and number of lots accessed. Just had a lengthy discussion about the cul-de-sac proposal. It should be noted that this cul-de-sac proposal requires a waiver from that section that is substantial.
Right.
The normal requirement, the maximum cul-de-sac length is five hundred feet, servicing a total of seven units. This proposal is asking for a cul-de-sac length of eight hundred and eighty feet, servicing fourteen units. In light of that, which is more than a nominal waiver request, we've evaluated a number of criteria to render an opinion. I will preface this by saying that we are reviewing or have reviewed the waiver request strictly in the context of the open space proposal and whether or not the cul-de-sac or the through road would compromise the viability of an open space development. The first question that we evaluated is will the construction of a through road conflict with the dimensional requirements for the open space development? In other words, if they sacrifice, as is proposed here, the through right of way would be on an open space parcel. Would the sacrifice of that portion of the open space throw off the dimensional conformance with what would be required for an open space development? As Rick mentioned, you've got a surplus of about one hundred and thirteen thousand square feet of viable upward open space. Constructing right of way through would require about thirteen thousand square feet, so about ten percent of that. Long and short of it is, you could construct a right of way through that portion of the open space and still meet the dimensional area requirements of the open space development. Will the construction for through road compromise an area of valuable open space land? Again, as stated, the proposed right of way would cross through an area slated to be open space. As I look at the plan, I see that the tree lines are already cleared along the area that would do the right of way. So putting a roadway through there would not necessarily compromise elements of the open space that is the desire of the board to preserve. I would also note in the discussions that we're putting waterline and we're putting sidewalk and we are putting an emergency access road through the same area, which is just about one step short of an actual roadway as far as what would be required to make it a viable emergency access. The slopes, Rick, through that area, I think, would be six percent if we distributed them evenly. From a practical standpoint, I don't know how an emergency vehicle, such as a large fire apparatus loaded, going to an emergency call, would traverse a six percent slope on grass.
How many ambulance?
Maybe.
Police car?
What time of year is it? Is it wet? Is it dry?
I don't know.
And these are the questions that I would have about the viability of an emergency access on a six percent slope that is grassed. So I guess the proposal to construct through that area is wanting to change the character of that slope regardless of whether or not it's a paved through road or just an emergency Another element, will the construction of a through road require land access rights that would be unduly difficult for the developer to acquire? Our understanding is that, and based on the proposed plans that depict a future right of way, those land rights currently exist and have existed since the time that the existing Crestbrook Road was created. So there is provision indeed, needed right of way access through to that cul-de-sac at this time. The developer would not need to acquire any new rights to access. Will there be tangible benefits derived from the cul-de-sac alternative? There certainly would be some benefits in the form of less impervious area that would be required to put in a through road. That would be somewhat balanced by the fact that a through road would not require the looparounds in each of the cul-de-sacs. We wouldn't have any of the looparound for the proposed cul-de-sac, and we would be removing some of the impervious area of the existing Crestbrook Road cul-de-sac. Rough calculations that I came up with were approximately three to four thousand square feet of impervious area. Every little bit is useful. Three to four thousand square feet is not what we would consider to be a substantial amount of impervious area. Will there be tangible benefits derived from the through road alternative? Going back to discussions at previous hearings, past practice has been for the town to loop roads, cul-de-sacs, if possible, to provide a dedicated means of access for through traffic as well as for emergency vehicles. That would still stand in this case with the through roadway being constructed. I made a comment, I missed the pathway down from Crestbrook Road, but it would also improve the access for residents from Crestbrook to reach the open space. I think that comment would be irrelevant under this proposal, which does call for a pathway to reach the open space. In light of all of those factors, and again, we have to look at this through the context that this is a substantial waiver being requested, strictly in the terms of the regulations as they are, I do not believe that we would be able to endorse that waiver request of this magnitude, given that we could still achieve an open space development with the through road.
That's good. I understand.
Unfortunately, it really doesn't matter because you've already acted on...
But you also, you also, and that's, and that's appreciated because, yeah, this could be an open space or there would be changes. Three or four thousand yards of cuts in, of gravel removal isn't a lot, but fifty percent is a lot. When you're taking down acreage of an acre and a half, that's not a lot by itself when it's fifty percent less trees it is. But you, when you mention the word intrinsic also, first of all, we don't want to talk about the five hundred foot cul-de-sac and the regulations that were done years ago, but you talk about the intrinsic value. Well, the biggest intrinsic value I see in this whole plan is because we have neighbors here that have prior in their neighborhood, that have lived in a certain style there for years, that have a child that has issues on the back. And I think intrinsically, the biggest value we can get, intrinsically, again, using your word, is to protect the livelihood of their neighborhoods. And I know that me personally, and not on the board, to take anybody's way of life and disturb it because there's a regulation that was put on thirty years ago that really, I don't think in this case really is factually material.
That's why you're on the board and then simply an advisor.
Yeah, and we appreciate, we appreciate your comments, but like I said, the vote is already done anyway, but...
The other thing to note is that in taking that vote, we have set a precedent for, for future developments who come forward looking for this type of solution and prefer to keep their, to cul-de-sacs, or keep their, just stay cul-de-sac if you will, as opposed to complying with the regulation and creating a road. So just, just keep that in mind.
But don't forget, Walter, we are not a precedent-setting board. The Conservation Commission, the ZBA are precedent-setting boards. What we do is quasi judicial boards matter. This here, and of course, if we're setting a precedent, we had one at first, the road not connecting, we are, we are obliged to take every case and look at the merits on it. And basically, the preference, the precedent as far as a future appeal really doesn't matter in our particular situation.
Well, I think it does, John. I think it does set...
To an extent it does, right. And that was the, that was the issues that we had with these folks and, hey, you just didn't connect Ferguson. And Ferguson is a two thousand two hundred foot...
Well, I don't want to belabor it.
No, I understand.
I just want to lay that point on the table, that's all.
I just don't want to let it go that, I don't think that if somebody comes before us again and there's two long cul-de-sacs, I wouldn't hold this in any regard to what that next one, myself. We don't have to legally.
So, just so I could clarify, and I apologize because I'm playing a lot of catch-up with this whole thing. What he just described was his suggestion to grant the waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac and the number of units on the cul-de-sac, right?
No, our suggestion would be that there's no reason not to put a through road and avoid the need for a cul-de-sac. You could still do an open space development with a through road. And that's where intrinsic comes from, not related to the broader issues that are within your...
That we, that we have to consider, exactly.
I can only consider the regulations as they are.
I understand, exactly, right. So basically, when there is a lot more dirt being removed, a lot more dirt being disturbed in woodland, Mike's position is, well, it's not really material enough to say, don't connect.
Well, as I mentioned, we're not really disturbing woodland along that corridor based on the plan, but woodland is already to either side of it.
No, the rest of the lots that are going to change now because...
Frontiers.
Well, they have option, well, they have options to do what they want. We've got to this point by, by a back and forth with them and the open space and what they're willing to leave and not, because these lots all before were probably fifteen to twenty thousand feet more. And part of our give and take with them was to have more open space for the town and less land value there for the lots. So this whole thing, this whole thing has been evolving over, what, three, four meetings? Perhaps so.
Yeah, maybe, four or five.
And the only other thing was the...
For whose counting, right?
The three or four thousand was not cubic yards, that was square feet of impervious area.
Yes, yeah.
Not yardage of material moved. And there is going to be material moved in order to create the sidewalk and the emergency access roadway. Unless, unless, Rick, you say that there wouldn't be grading in that area?
No, there's definitely going to be some cutting here and some filling here as we come off the end of the cul-de-sac. That's going to climb up and grate, but it's going to be minimal. It's not going to be a sixty foot envelope with sidewalk and roadway and et cetera.
Do you want me to continue?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Section five point two point one point one, minimum widths and depths, second walkway waived. Regulations require two five foot wide sidewalks for secondary streets. The applicant is proposing to install one. In light of the proposed country or natural drainage that were going on the west side of the road, we would support a waiver of this nature to do sidewalk on just the east side of the road that would facilitate the swell on the west side. Section five point two point eight, sand grinded curving, substitute capecod berm. Regulations called for granite. The applicant is requesting to install bituminous capecod berm. I think bituminous berm, not capecod, monolithic.
We want to change that because we have problems with the rim ridge.
Yeah, monolithic. Monolithic, yeah. So we would endorse that waiver request. Section three point three point two point fifteen, planning profile, fifty and sixty foot, one and two equals fifty, one and two equals sixty foot scales. We have no problem with that, provided the information on those plans is still legible and, you know, getting to a larger scale doesn't compromise the clarity of information. Section H point two point E, design process. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the normal requirement for ocean, ocean, open space developments, that a registered landscape architect perform or be a participant in the evaluation process for developing the ocean, open space layout. We would endorse that. We would endorse that waiver provided that the applicant's design, the design engineer has asked for a waiver of that in the key act, and that said, we would endorse that waiver if the applicant can demonstrate to the board satisfaction, comparable experience with open space developments, working with regulations of a similar framework to this.
I think he ties into this pretty much, that he's doing most of this development and not clearing any land.
Again, it's a waiver they're requesting. We would endorse it if you guys are comfortable with reg, performing that function. Sheet two, lot plan one. For proposed lot six, the lot size right now is twenty-one, one sixteen. There's a small portion that looks like it might be carved out at some point. Rick, did you point it out there?
That area there, the reduction would result in twenty thousand square feet if that roadway was ever constructed, to your point.
So, just verification that we don't create a plan that will at some point in the future potentially create a substantial lot, according to Rick, it would result in a twenty thousand square foot lot.
We can separate that. Thank you. We have a comment on that.
Sheet number four, grading and recovery plan. The existing house and the septic system and the barn, both of those structures are apparently proposed to remain as part of the development. The open space requirements call for some setbacks from certain features that the house and/or the barn will not meet, and therefore would require a waiver. I think in light of the fact that both of those structures already exist, those waivers would be reasonable. They should however be added to the list of requested waivers, and the amount of waiver being requested should be identified. Basically, it's, you need two hundred feet from any kind of surface waters, and you need a hundred feet of natural vegetative buffer from surface waters and white ones. So, again, it's a simple matter. We would endorse it because the structure's already there, of adding these requested Proposed open space access trails. There are two trails depicted on the plans. This is another question which Walter and I seem to have been in sync. Is there a trail proposed to give access to the open space on Medway Street? There does not appear to be, no, no, no proposal. It may be something to be considered. The board wants to improve the access to the open space from.
Yeah, can I make a comment on that? Rick, you know, it just occurred to me that if you were, let me step up to the board here for a second. If you were to take this lot and slide it that distance this way and put the access here, you'd avoid the grade issue.
The unintended consequence of that would be you'd be cutting off the continuity of the open space and creating a very small open space lot at Medway Street, because now that, I don't know what lot number that is, but.
We can look at a trail system there and come up with something. Jiggle drive something around. That's the preference of the board, we can certainly do that.
All right, there's no specific design required, but just, it would be appreciated if you could do that, yeah.
Comment eight, buyer retention area on open space number two. As Rick mentioned, there's a small buyer retention area on the smaller of the open space parcels, downgrading of the existing Crestbrook Road. My observation on that is simply that there doesn't appear to be a significant amount of impervious area that would generate runoff to that buyer retention basin. You might get the backside of those two houses. It might be preferable to avoid creating an additional stormwater management feature that requires maintenance, long-term maintenance by homeowners association. If it's not absolutely necessary, put the treatment with the other buyer retention basin, provided that the adequate treatment can be provided in that one location. As I said, I don't see a lot of impervious area generating runoff to that one, so.
Yeah, we originally did, we were looking at trying to capture some of these roofs and direct them back there. The stormwater system's going to evolve substantially as we get into a definitive. So these were just some general ideas, but we appreciate the comment.
All right, second to last comment. Buyer retention basin, second on lot number nine. New larger proposed buyer retention basin, occupied portions that will be a developable lot. The regulations require that any of those stormwater structures occupy their own dedicated parcel. A waiver request would be required for that. Again, in light of the fact that that really is the proper location for the basin based on the soils and the grading, I don't think we have any opposition to citing one there on a developable parcel, considering that it's hard to get a house on it. But again, procedurally, the way the request would need to be made. Last comment is related to the same buyer retention basin. There are minimum setbacks from other features, property lines, building cellars, and as it is currently depicted, the location of the basin would require some waivers from the dimensional setbacks. And again, in light of the context of the project, we would endorse those as well.
Any other comments from the board on the way to work first, this open space? Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions?
I think we're here for the next thing, that's Lawrence.
Lawrence, you have a question. All right, so, Rick, was this the one that you proposed with a bus stop or is that something?
It's still there.
It's still there?
We've got the bus stop area here and the little turnoff.
Turnoff.
Still there, didn't highlight it.
I wasn't, I was making sure I didn't have my mask mixed up with another plant.
You'll be writing in three weeks to submit, thanks for following me, and you want to be put on the September meeting?
Yes, I'm on vacation next week, so.
All right.
Thank you for asking. So, Mr. Kane, Mrs. Kane.
A motion to, a motion to extend this public hearing until September meeting at seven o'clock, September twentieth, two thousand.
I don't think that's right.
In terms of date?
No, you guys closed the hearing, didn't you?
On the open space permit.
Right, but we have to refile.
And then they refile with the definitive.
We have to refile all the plan, all new submission, with all the bells and whistles. So we, no, this is the first step.
Just special permit.
So we don't really.
Which actually we're having.
In that case, you can get back to us once you're set to file and notify, okay?
Yep. We have a closing out order.
Yeah, requires roll call vote, so there'd be risk and we redo that.
We need super majority roll call.
You need to vote yes or no with your name, state your name.
So, click the motion again, please read the motion again.
So you need to vote to close the hearing and approve the special permit?
Well, we already voted to close the hearing, so we don't want to do that again. We already voted, we already voted the special permit, but we have to do a name, a name vote. So if we can vote to approve the open space plan by name, John Whelton, aye.
Walter Byron, aye.
Greg Demiano, aye.
Kevin Calgan, aye.
All right, so, we're all set with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
So, in conditions, you, well, you think hold conditions to the subdivision.
I think the conditions and the meat and potatoes is still forthcoming.
Well, sometimes they might say, we want the subdivision application to indicate this or that.
That's in the conditions of the special permit, that's fine.
Is this special permit, that's an issue that we endorse, you know? How many days do we have?
You have ninety days in the closing hearing.
So we can address the issue and the waivers and the conditions at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
With the definitive, well, with the definitive plan for that.
Yeah, you could do it with the definitive plan. The only conditions you would, you apply now would be ones that you want to see reflected in the definitive plan, than the definitive plan is the more detailed conditions, the actual construction.
Why don't we go over the ones you want to see on the definitive plan at our next meeting, just so you know.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we have an informal discussion with forty B project, Abbeyville, which is up of Lawrence Street, and Tom DePlatter was coming in and.
Do you want your plans?
Thinking of this all over the roadway configuration. I think because he intends to have these roads submitted as town-accepted roads, so now that's under the jurisdiction of the planning board, so we had asked him at the ZBA to come in and show us a roadway layouts and to see if we have any questions, because down the road, they'll be asking us to approve, these to be approved by the town. And there's a couple of different twists in this roadway construction that we don't normally have, so I wanted him to bring it and explain it to us.
Given the appropriation of oversight of the project with the ZBA and it being forty B and the planning board, how does that?
Yeah, they were, we're asked to, we're asked to give our opinion on the roadways, amongst other things. So I figured before we can give our opinion on the roadways for down, when it's approved and to be submitted to the town for acceptance, we should probably have them come and explain them to us rather than dropping off a plan, have us try to fend through it and decide what spot, because there are much narrower right-of-ways in the subdivision, there are one-way streets in a few of them, so, well, you're up there already, so I thought they could come and explain to us just why they're doing it and what's involved. Are they, is Tommy out there still?
Yeah.
Is coming back? All right.
We're going to need a blood transfusion after this.
A lot of colors, I don't know if it needs a different style or what. If you unconnected its cul-de-sac.
So, Rick's going to present, but he just needed a five-minute break, so it'll be.
Okay. I thought that, at the last meeting, they were connecting.
They did connect them at the last meeting, right?
The fire chief made them, or a few of them.
They connected a few, I think that.
So there's still three not connected?
That red, kind of, looks like a nose of the pot, comes down. It used to be two cul-de-sacs, I think. And I think that white blue one, cyan one.
We have a question from the gallery. The white blue one looks like it's a narrower road than the rest. Is that a one-way one, Mike?
Let me see. It looks like it is Albert Drive, thirteen, fourteen, and.
How would you move, does it carry fifty?
Sure. Yeah, it does, actually, it was a milk underneath for color code.
Can you zoom in on like, just hit the zoom in button, just maybe once or twice?
John, I think the crowd had a question.
That's better.
Can we wait, can we wait until they?
I got all night, I got all night, I'm fine.
It's eleven already, right? Yeah. Well, can I have, just give us a preview of what the roads are and what they're about, and then we can have some comments.
It's good to know, because we've never.
This is a church, you know, you can move up front, you may say a little better. Church people sit. You again, jeez. What I think might be helpful, since you've got so many vibrant colors up there, why don't you go over each roadway, give us the right-of-way width, and any other particulars of it? If you're looking for something less than what's normally acceptable with the town, give us the reasons why, okay? I know there's a, is there a one-way road in there someplace?
There is a one-way road, yes.
Could you just explain to us the reason why they have to be one-way and the width of them and anything else that would help us?
And they have some eleven by seventeen, so.
Oh, great.
I have a big one for you. I want you to look at the big one. Thank you. Well, for the record, Rick, good luck with United Consultants, hand it on down. Mr. DePlatter, the applicant for the Abbeyville projects. The project consists of, the site consists of two projects. We have an apartment proposal located in this area here, as well as a hundred and forty-eight senior family houses located in the second portion of, a second portion of the site, which is another project. So what we've done is we've identified various roadway widths and some alternative designs. So the first roadway is Buckley Boulevard, would you maybe pan up a little bit, that's it, please?
Where are you at?
Right here. If I could. Get the bottom of, well, we can do it on here.
She's good.
There you go.
Thank you. So Buckley Boulevard is one of the main access points coming in off of Lawrence Street. Buckley Boulevard is proposed to be a divided island, landscaped island, eight feet in width, and two thirteen-foot one-way streets on each side of the island, so thirteen-foot street coming in and thirteen-feet street, thirteen-foot wide street coming out. So that does not match the town's subdivision regulations. However, the right-of-way width is required to be sixty, proposed to be sixty. Twenty-eight feet of pavement is required. We're requesting that the roadway be a divided roadway with two thirteen-foot lanes, one in and one out from the site. So, the green road here, well, Annie's Loop would be actually the next roadway if I go in order that are up there. Annie's Loop is required to be a sixty-five, sixty-foot right-of-way. We're proposing a fifty-foot right-of-way. Twenty-eight feet of pavement is required, we're proposing that that be reduced to twenty-six feet of pavement. There is a sidewalk proposed on the internal loop of the roadway system, or sidewalk waiver is requested basically at the outside loop. The roadway itself, twenty-six feet, we feel is adequate. The improvements of the utility systems, the roadway, the sidewalks, et cetera, are within the right-of-way, so we feel that's a good waiver request. The third roadway would be Elliott Boulevard, again, an access point off of Lawrence Street, comes into the roundabout, travels through this area here and terminates at the town-owned property. That roadway, right-of-way requirement is sixty, we're proposing fifty. Again, twenty-eight feet of pavement is proposed, and we're looking for twenty-six feet of pavement.
Why is that little stub there?
It's just dead ends?
It's just dead ends. This is a town-owned piece of property, it was tax title, so we're providing an access road to it if the town wanted to do something in the future. You know, we can certainly pull the road back, that was one of the comments.
Just wondering what it was.
Yeah, providing access, you know? I mean, if the town wanted to build an athletic field or do some development, they would have the frontage on Lawrence Street as well as an access point in the development. So again, sidewalk on one side, we're requesting a sidewalk on one side, everything fits within the right-of-way. Next is Man's Loop. Man's Loop is the purple roadway here, as well as this piece here. Man's Loop is required to be sixty feet in width. We're proposing fifty feet for this section of it and a reduction of forty feet here.
For the right-of-way.
For the right-of-way, just for this piece here. And we're looking for pavements to go from twenty, twenty-eight feet required to twenty-six feet in both. Again, there's no sidewalk here, there's a sidewalk system through the. Again, there's no sidewalk here, there's a sidewalk system through the rear of the lots. There are a lot of trail systems through the site, so there are not sidewalks that are, you know, butting the roadways everywhere. It's been designed to include a sidewalk system that is outside of the right-of-way, if you will.
Why is that width required to the pavement twenty-eight feet? Is it a primary road or something?
It's a primary road, it services more than fifty houses.
All right.
So, you know, some of these are debatable, does that service more than fifty houses?
So right now, the roadways, from what you've said so far, are pretty much what we approve on a regular basis, twenty-four-foot widths, fifty or sixty-foot right-of-ways, and then one sidewalk, so just to.
Correct.
All right.
So now we're moving into some of the narrower roads.
Well, yeah, but the pavement is within what we typically do, but the rights-of-ways are small. Well, fifty-foot right-of-ways we have on a regular basis, well, it was one forty, for example. Right, yeah, that we don't have on a regular basis, right?
So, now, moving around the internal portion of the development, we have Richard Road proposed to service four houses. We would propose Richard Road, and we provided you a list of the roads we're proposing to make one-way at the bottom, and Richard Road would be one of them. And thirty-three-foot wide right-of-way is required, thirty-foot was being proposed, thirteen feet of pavement is the one-way requirement, and we're proposing eighteen feet of pavement. Now, if you look at table, figure thirty-one in the back of your regulations, that's where that was derived from, and that's for one-way with no on-street parking, which we're not proposing any on-street parking. The houses will be serviced by the garages and the driveways, parking required.
So that fits our regulations for a one-way street?
With the exception of with three feet narrower in the right-of-way.
Right.
But again, there's no sidewalks.
Okay.
And you're proposing a one-way simply because the width is what's attainable? Or is there some other reason?
We're proposing one-ways to help minimize, you know, the roadway width, we don't want to have wide roadways, we don't want to have excessive pavement, so we're taking advantage of one-way roadways. So that basically, these three, four, five roadway systems, some of them, they're all proposed to be one-ways.
Which ones are again, are there?
So that's one, Richard, there are the, I believe that's Albert, and we have Weight Circle, Daniel Bat's Loop, and I believe Moss Road. So those are all to be one-way. And the pavement width is about five feet wider, is required. So, we then have four cul-de-sacs that have varying conditions. So the first one is Weight Circle, which services, I believe, six houses, so that would fall within your small residential street, fifty-foot, fifty-foot right-of-way, we're proposing thirty, twenty-four feet of pavement, we're proposing eighteen into a turnaround. We have increased the turnarounds to be in a cul-de-sac bulb that would meet the planning board regulations for the diameter of the cul-de-sac bulb on all four of the, of the cul-de-sacs. So they're basically all proposed to be thirty-three feet in width and eighteen feet of pavement, these three. That one's proposed to be twenty-six feet of pavement. So that's basically the overview of all the roadways.
One more time, you've got five one-way streets, is that correct, or is it four?
Five.
Five, yeah.
Five one-way streets.
Yellow, black, white, blue, green, and red.
And the one cul-de-sac there?
Are you calling?
It's how one, Rick?
Which one?
The bigger one, the longer one?
That one? I, it exceeds the five-hundred-foot let, I don't have it up.
All right, and the other ones don't?
Um, I don't believe, no, that one doesn't, and I don't believe those two do. But again, the house services. But we're all looking at six houses, six houses, six houses.
And what's the main reason that you have cul-de-sacs rather than having them connect to the nearest roadway?
What we were originally trying to accomplish was a roadway system that had basically na, put my glasses on correctly, had neighborhoods. So these two roadways were basically cul-de-sacs, this roadway was, again, two cul-de-sacs, and it was a large, open-space park area proposed for the middle, so we, so the concept was to create all these little neighborhoods and not have them interconnected with roadways.
Can you just point to the walking trails that are throughout this place?
Sure. So, there's a sidewalk that comes in here, there's a sidewalk around this area here, one in here, comes up in here, there's a walking trail over to the, to the pond area. There's a trail coming in off of here, trail system's in through here, coming out here, and then there's a trail system running to the back of these lots, and then it comes back in right here, runs in and around to the open space, and there's an exit point for that trail system here, and then there's, you know, a lot of existing natural trails out in that section, as well as on the other side of the, of the river, there's already some beautiful existing trails. So there is some, you know, pedestrian access proposed, we were proposing to go down the dam with a pedestrian trail and make a connection out to Lawrence Street near the Park Street intersection with that trail as well.
Anybody have any questions on setup? So the basic deviations, some of them have smaller right-of-ways.
Correct.
And a couple of cul-de-sacs are longer.
Correct, and a little narrower.
The, the green road versus the dark blue one there?
This green one?
Yeah, versus the dark blue one down the bottom? Yeah, that short one there?
Yes.
Both of them, both of them start, originate Lawrence Street, right?
Correct.
Why did you choose to put a center island in that one but not the other one?
That's a good question, maybe Tom can answer that one. I just drew the lines.
Actually, coming in from that, that area there, when you come in, we just thought it would be a nice main entrance, because when you come through, you actually look right through, and it's a big open meadow, and then there's actually a structure, almost like a gazebo type of structure, that actually would service the community, and then from there, originally had a proposal, there was a big open area where that blue road connects now, and so when you, when you came in, you could actually look for, Rick, I'm going to say, a thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet, just, you know, sort of green, and it really made the, the project, you know, not feel that dense or anything, and it really opened the area up.
Yeah.
And that was a combined effort with, when we met quite a few times with a couple of the representatives of the town and stuff to come up with that concept and everything. So that's, that's why we wanted to do that, and plus add some vegetation in that way, that treats some things.
Are you aware that that Cranbury Meadow paper road is filed with the planning board?
I remember that. The one at the end of that project?
Yeah.
That was an old.
Off the end of the hedge, huh?
Yeah, Cranbury Heights subdivision.
That was a subdivision proposal years ago that was pulled, and there's a new applicant now that just submitted plans with the planning board for a twenty-lot subdivision that's going to come off of Lawrence Street and connect through, I believe, Eagle and Brett Palm Road. Right.
I wasn't aware they filed, I heard somebody was looking at it, I wasn't aware.
They filed what?
They filed, yeah, special permit for an open space.
Are the plans online by any chance?
Not yet, I haven't, I haven't even done any, I want them installed, I guess.
Sure.
They will be though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions, guys?
Just on Man's Loop, it goes from, it says fifty and forty are proposed right-of-way width, at one point does it tend out?
This section here is forty.
Gotcha, okay.
The rest of it's fifty.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment, Ken, Byron, please, please?
No, we don't get those, we're just giving out recommendations to the ZVA, this is their project.
Okay.
They weren't required to come to see us, but they decided to when I requested at the last meeting, so that we could just see the roadways, because initially it was going to be privately owned roads, and they changed it, and they wanted it to be publicly held roads, and that which brings us into it, so want to make sure nobody had any questions with the configuration, if it varied quite a bit from what we normally accept as a town road. All the utilities are going to be in the right-of-way, right?
For the most part, I mean, there's some cross-country utilities running to the detention areas, but, yeah, I mean, electric telephone cable will be within the right-of-way.
All right. Michelle, you have any comments?
I, I think some of the, particularly the one-way roadways are a little bit awkward, and I understand they're trying to maximize the number of units and the density of it, but like particularly the, the yellow Richard Road, you know, I'd, I'd much prefer to see a few less units than to have these awkward little short one-way, just to get a couple more houses in there, and just from a flow and, and kind of feel for the neighborhood to insert these small little one-way roads, it, it, it just doesn't, to me, result in a, in a feeling of, of a connected kind of system, of a neighborhood and roadways and circulation and pattern.
Right.
It just seems kind of awkward, and I.
Well, Richard, if I, if I may, you know, we could certainly take these houses in turn and make the lot bigger and eliminate the roadway, but then we're creating the driveways on the main roads. So the objective was to try and create these small driveways, if you will.
But they're main roads, but they're main roads, like, you know, guys, think of like the, like Pheasant Hill you were talking about earlier, it's this network of roads like, like that, I mean, it's not a main road like, like Park Street, it's not even a main road like Lawrence Street, it's a neighborhood road, and that's where driveway should go off of. So I think that, that I would much prefer to see that and eliminate some of these small one-way legs. I, I think even the red one that you have that bisects the two cul-de-sacs is a missed opportunity, I, I, I think there's some.
This one?
Yeah, I think, you know, I would rather see the cul-de-sacs have some connection, because this truly is a neighborhood, and that's where you get neighborhoods, is through those kinds of connections, you don't get a neighborhood from a bunch of cul-de-sacs. You know, people love cul-de-sacs in this town, I live in one, so, but, that's just, that's not planning one-on-one, it's just not.
Do walking trails connect the cul-de-sacs?
Yes, they do.
They do, so there's pedestrian connectivity, just not traffic? I can't read this, so I can't see, but.
Yeah.
All right.
But I mean, I don't think that's the kind of feedback you're looking, I mean, that would be my normal feedback as a planning board member, I know that's not why you're here tonight, so I don't really know what's appropriate for you. I just think there's some missed opportunities, some better flows, some better feel to it, but.
What I'm going to suggest is everybody in the board, I think the comments are valid, I think that you should jot down your comments and your reason why, they all pertain to the, the traffic flow of the neighborhood, and we'll turn them in to Betsy and let her compile everything together and send them off to the ZVA. We'll leave their decision as far as, you know, how the project goes.
Yeah, I think the Bat's Loop is another awkward little one-way, kind of shoved in there just to get some more dark green in the Bat's Way.
This one?
Do I have the right name?
This one, that's Bat's.
Bat's, yeah, yep, just.
If anybody in the audience has a question, right, it should pertain strictly to the roadway configuration, okay, and the actual dimensions of the roadway, because we really don't have any jurisdiction on anything else.
Question on that, what your jurisdiction is, how about the connection to Lawrence Street?
We don't have jurisdiction on that.
Even though it's on line turns and, okay, I, I just, because of where they're put.
Right, right, we're, we're more mechanically involved, not with the design of this, but just basically the configuration of roadways that they want the town to accept, to make sure they comply with most of our standards, and if they vary, we'd like to know the reason why and make sure it all works in the end. As far as all of that, that involve traffic, et cetera, that would be in the ZVA and their hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have a question that pertains?
I have a question.
Yes, what's your name?
Oh, Kim Thurler, live on Bush Palm Road. What's the convention for naming roads? Maybe this is off-topic, but does relate to roads.
Normally, it's done, approved by the selectmen, and I think they want most of the roadways now to be ex-military names in that arrange, I think there's something like that, but I'm not sure on a, I don't want a comprehensive permit, but I'm not sure whether the selectmen would have the rights to get into the naming or not.
And does the word Boulevard connote something in particular, or is it just a whimsical?
I don't know, it connotes something to me, but I'm not sure, like I said, I'm not sure who, who has the file say in that.
Uh-huh.
Anybody else? Yes?
Mike Judice, Eagle Drive, just a general comment, you mentioned that if they were going to vary from your typical layouts, you'd want to hear why, and I, I don't know that we heard why, other than they just wanted to be able to squeeze more units in, in some cases going from sixty-foot to thirty or forty-foot right-of-way. Can we get a better explanation, Ryan, if you're looking for that waiver?
Yeah, a lot of the, the only right-of-ways that they're really varying are the ones, we have fifty and sixty-foot, I guess the forty-foot ones, they're doing, probably is this, we leave a sixty-foot right-of-way, and we have a twenty-foot wa, twenty-four-foot roadway, and we have a five-foot grass strip and a cul-de-sac. What happens is on the back of one of the streets, on the street side without the, the road, you have like sixteen feet of just land that's technically owned by the town, but it becomes the grass front yard of the neighbors, and I think for the purpose of this comprehensive permit, they're just getting rid of that excess land and keeping the lots in size. And I think that, from what I heard anyway, the, the small little connecting roads are just to get driveways off the main street, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, we will put comments together, Rick, thank you for coming, Tom, you're coming in, we'll put comments together, and have you send over to the ZVA. Motion to adjourn, anybody that's in there, anything else? Second? No, I'm asking for more.
Yeah, you can, he.
I thought you were making.
No, you.
Thank you. Own favor?
Aye.
Thank you.